Okay, so we have the Internet back up. We are going to utilize that unless it goes down again, in which case we're going to, we're going to move on with the meeting. We're going to dispense with the use of the streaming feed. The meeting is being recorded, so this entire meeting and proceeding is being recorded. It will be posted online should the Internet go off again. We have some members participating upstairs from our two boardrooms. If the feed stops, they're going to be invited down here, so we'll all squeeze in, make accommodations as necessary, and we'll move on from there. I'm just going to ask you one more time, Brian. Did you have any other information for us?
Just a couple more points.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, I'll be brief. Wanted to respond to the issue regarding the variance versus the use permit. I think we outlined that fairly clearly in the presentation and in the staff report, and do feel that the proper permitting path is a variance for those head frame structures, given the fact that those structures we don't believe fit into the categories identified in our code that allow height exception to be processed with a use permit and variance is the appropriate pathway. We also don't believe it was a surprise since we had numerous conversations with the applicant's previous counsel regarding concerns over being able to make those variance findings and asking on a number of occasions for further justification for the need, the height of those structures. Wanted to touch on policy discussion that was referenced in the EIR. EIR that referenced that the project was consistent with all land use policies. The environmental impact report is not the document that goes into an in-depth look at all the county's policies and code requirements. Those policies were reviewed in the EIR that were related to protection of environmental resources specifically, and not necessarily all of the land use compatibility policies, as well as the central themes and other issues identified by the general plan. And the SEQA document is not the location where that analysis occurred, which was, the appropriate place was a staff report. And so, the information in the staff report is the determination of staff regarding the consistency with policies. And did want to mention that the other, other mines were mentioned, and I won't go into the detail about the other mines, but they were different scenarios, different types of mining, different locations within the county, and feel that's a bit of an apples-to-oranges comparison, and we can certainly go into more detail if the board has any other questions. And with that, happy to answer any other questions via our team of your board. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. We're just going to open up clarifying questions from the board, and I'll start with you, Supervisor Hall.
Thanks. I think I might just have one at this point. It's relatively minor, and it's to the applicant. It's going back to the discussion of the transportation. So it's on slide 10, and mentioned again on page 10 and page 40. And there was a discussion of some, you know, only, there were only two employees going through, and then only three employees, and I'm unclear. We're talking about 312 employees and multiple truck routes, and that sounded like you weren't including that in this discussion. I'm just wanting to clarify where that issue gets addressed, if not in the traffic impacts.
The, the truck trips or the employee trips?
Both, both. So, in the traffic impacts on, on slide 10, you've mentioned there were only 10 employees at 3:30, two employees at 3:30. Unclear what that's referring to and how that refers to the traffic impacts of what would it look like if you had 312 employees and multiple truck trips every day.
Do you want to take that one? Ben Mossman's going to take this question.
Okay.
I can answer that question. So the, there's, there's basically two sets of the workforce. The majority works 12 hours per day, and they'll be changing at 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., which avoids the peak hour traffic. So, so they are coming and going to work when most people aren't on the road. And so that, that's part of the design to minimize the impact from, from, from traffic.
Okay.
And a certain portion of the employees work a regular day, eight hours, five, eight hours a day, five days a week. And so they start at 7:00, but leave at 3:00, 3:30.
Okay.
Which, which is those, those 40 people. And so the traffic report assumes them going on different routes, living in different areas of, of the community.
And how about the trucks?
The trucks are, go 16 hours per day.
Okay, so this analysis, for you, includes the truck routes and the employee.
Yeah, and the truck routes are very specific. So the truck routes are designated to be just on Brunswick Road. So, so driving down Brunswick Road to Highway 2049, except for the, some of the trucks, when they're putting fill on the Centennial site, they would use the Whispering Pines. So, so on those intersections, there's no trucks at all going to Highway 174, and there's no trucks at all going down Sutton Way.
Okay. I'll leave that, any discussion of that for later. I just want to get clarification that was included. Thank you.
I have a quick follow-on question on slide 12. Krista, if you could pull that up. You, you mentioned that this plan did not allow you the capacity to mitigate some of the impact, and therefore it ended up in the unavoidable category. And question to Nevada County staff, can you, does that actually remove that unavoidable impact now that the publication has been completed?
Chair Bullock, I'm going to defer to Nick Papani, and we'll see if we have an answer, or we may need to consult with the traffic consultant, but let me bring up.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon now, Chair and members of the board. Nick Papani. So, the slide is correct in that when we determined it would be an unavoidable impact, the draft EIR talks about how while the applicant could commit funding to it for their fair share of traffic, there was no guaranteed source of the remaining funds. I haven't looked at this closely, but if, if this program here does outline a path toward collecting the remaining funding, then we would typically render that less than significant because there's a guaranteed mechanism to collect the remainder of the funds.
Okay. Thank you. You answered my question. I'll go back to Supervisor Hall. Do you have any others?
I think I'll hold off on.
Okay. Supervisor Swarthout?
So, I think between Kit and, and Brian, all my questions so far have been answered, so I will.
Okay. Supervisor Schofield?
Yeah, I have a couple, and you already answered one, Brian. But the other one was a reference to taking, and I know you didn't, you said it wasn't meant to be a threat, but it sounded like a threat. I'm, I'm kind of curious, is this a concern we should be having, or your response to it, Diane?
Thank you, Commission, Board member. So, the comment was that there's a taking because they would not be able to exercise their mineral rights. And the mineral rights are valued for tax purposes in conjunction with the right to produce. And currently, the law in this country and in the state does not state that production is a fundamental, a fundamental constitutional right. And so, and at this juncture, local government, including this county, still has the opportunity to regulate that right to produce minerals. So there would not be a taking because it's not a fundamental right.
Very good. Thank you, Diane. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hook?
I'll wait till the, we're done, because actually you've answered all the ones on my list for so far. I have some other ones that I'm going to have clarification after public comment.
Okay. I have a few. I'll try and whizz through them. Feel free to just give me a very brief response. The fill pile, you had some renderings looking from the road inside with the gate in the foreground. Will the fill pile, will that be conducive to building? Will it be compacted so it can be built upon, or is that essentially forevermore open space?
Ben Mossman's going to respond to that for you.
Yes, it would be. That's why we refer to it as engineered fill. And so, and so the, it's all compacted in lifts so that at the end of the construction, it would be suitable to place buildings on top.
For additional building. Okay, thank you. And then this is a question to staff on the applicant's presentation. You know, actually, I'm going to skip that one. It has to do with the ME zoning. On the slide number 38, you have the noise contours up there, and I just was curious, because you're operating 24 hours a day, there's no difference between noise at night or noise during the day? Is that right?
I got, there, there is a difference between day and night. And in the noise report, there actually is two maps. One shows the noise contours during the day, and one during the night. And so there's actually different standards during the time of the day.
Yeah.
And so, in the daytime, there would be the compaction of the engineered fill. And so that, that was additional noise source, but that doesn't occur at night. And so, the compaction of the engineered fill only takes place weekdays until 3:30.
Okay.
And, and there's other parts of it that are, are based on, on the hours of operations. So, for example, loading trucks from the outdoors is also restricted. It's daytime hours only. At nighttime, you, you have basically underground work going on, and you have mineral processing going inside enclosed buildings. And so, there is, it's 24 hours per day, but there, all the activities that are intensive have been restricted through the proposal and in, and as described in the EIR.
Okay. Yep, that answered my question. Thank you. Well, I think you used DNL, day-night level for night, and DB for day. Okay, I don't have any other question. Any other questions from the board? With that, we'll open up public comment. Start with numbers one through 10, and then we're going to turn it over to County Clerk to lead us through the additional numbers after that.
Chair Bullock, we did receive all written comment by the board has been recorded, and it's available online. Any written comment before 4:00 p.m. last night?
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, number one through 10. Number one, please step up to the mic. You have three minutes. Your mic will turn off after that. And we are, I am going to take a little bit of liberty as the chair and open up questions for certain members of the public presenting to the board today by my colleagues on the board. So, that'll be up, up to me, and I'll let you know how it goes.
Thank you. I had a feeling that wasn't on. My name is Jennifer Hansen. I'm the General Manager for Nevada Irrigation District. I am here today to convey the comments that the district has sent to the county, to the county related to the applicant's proposed project. We have three remaining issues, and those are as follows. Number one, we do not feel that one year of groundwater monitoring prior to dewatering of the mine shafts is sufficient for future dressing of impacts to wells. And as such, our second comment is related to the idea that a well is only impacted if it is reduced by 10% from its existing level established by the baseline. And then our third comment, which was addressed earlier in the applicant's presentation, is related to our request for a surety bond. And the purpose of the bond is to be able to pay for any additional impacts of waterline construction for wells impacted in the future. I would also like to address the applicant's comments that were made earlier in their presentation. I found them to be very disingenuous. The applicant, to date, has not contacted NID to communicate any concerns with the method by which we calculated our bond request. We are always open to conversations. However, the applicant made a statement that seemed to imply we used, in their words, a cartoon drawing, and we're in somehow in coordination with some anti-mine groups, which is simply not true, and was not substantiated by any evidence. It's very discouraging that as an attorney, that they would make these statements that come very close to crossing a border of ethics that they should be upholding themselves to. In the future, if they would like to communicate with NID and discuss our bond request, we do have an expectation that they hold themselves to a higher level standard of not only ethics, but a professional standard as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Thank you for your time today.
You're welcome.
So, can there be any doubt that this community is not in favor of this mine? I don't think so. My name is Lori Oberholzer, and I'm a city and environmental planner and a former mayor of Nevada City. Today, I am here representing the Board of Community Environmental Advocates Foundation, which has organized the Idaho-Maryland Mine Campaign, Mine Watch Campaign. Over the last four years, thousands of residents, hundreds of businesses, and dozens of activist groups have come together to voice their opposition to the mine. This opposition has brought our community together like perhaps no other. County residents from both sides of the political spectrum oppose the mine. I'd like to go through a quick list of what our community coalition has accomplished. Almost 1,000 people wore no-mine stickers at the Planning Commission hearing in May. Over 5,500 people signed the no-mine petition we gave you two summers ago. That's enough to fill this room 20 times over. 250 businesses signed either a group letter of opposition or the petition. And before the hearing in May, the Planning Commission, over 1,300 people emailed personalized "just say no" comments to the county. At that hearing, we delivered another 1,000 postcards, and we have another 375 up here on the table for you today. In response to the Rise Gold vested rights petition, over 1,200 people signed a group letter saying, "Let's finish this." Mine opponents have also written 248 smart and entertaining op-eds as of yesterday, February 1st. The collection was delivered to you in two volumes, which are sitting up here in the table, and we, we think that they're going to be a bestseller in Nevada County. Hundreds of yellow no-mine lawn signs have stayed up through all kinds of weather, and our Mine Watch Coalition has grown to 26 national, state, regional, and local groups, including the Sierra Club, the Center for Biodiversity, Earthworks, and Patagonia. So, many of these volunteers will speak today, and we would like to thank you for your, the time that you're about to spend listening to us. I'd like to get a quick comment in on the general plan and remind you that it's the people's document, and it's you folk, the folks, the Board of Supervisors, that are charged with interpreting it, not the applicant, or the applicant's lawyers, or even an EIR consultant. So, please support our general plan on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Briars. I live in District 1. The California Environmental Equality Act, SEQA, does not allow the deferral of important studies necessary to characterize a project's impacts. According to SEQA guidelines, an environmental impact report, EIR, must include an accurate description of a project's environmental setting, which provides the baseline physical conditions by which a lead agency determines whether an impact is significant. It goes on to state, this, this should describe physical environmental conditions as they exist at the time the notice of preparation is published, that is before the draft EIR is prepared. The purpose of this requirement is, per SEQA guidelines, to give the public and decision-makers the most accurate and understandable picture possible of the project's likely near-term and long-term impacts. The court case of Savour Peninsula Com versus Monterey County Board of Supervisors affirmed that point. The EIR clearly acknowledges that this baseline is needed for wells. It states that for each domestic well, a projected and seasonally average water level should be, shall be estimated, which will serve as a baseline groundwater level. But the EIR incorrectly defers the collection of the needed additional groundwater data to after the EIR is approved. Unless the EIR identifies current groundwater levels, it cannot establish performance criteria and evaluate how dewatering may impact wells, and it's not possible to define appropriate mitigations. Rise Gold's hydrology model estimates that water levels will drop between 1 to 10 feet for over 150 wells, but there is no current data that could tell what the impact would be to well owners. A two-foot drop A two-foot drop could be critical. How would that be determined? Are some wells near failure? We don't know. CEQA law, county precedents, and common sense all say the same thing. Collection of current adequate data must be included in the draft EIR to assess impacts and properly mitigate them. They cannot be deferred until after the CEQA decision has been made. Domestic well monitoring data should have been collected and included in the draft EIR. Adequate current information is missing in many impact areas. The deficient domestic well data is inadequate and should not be certified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Good afternoon. My name is Lauren Takberry. I live in District 3.
What's your name?
Lauren Takberry.
Laura, thank you.
Okay. I work for Sierra Club. I live in District 3, right off the Brunswick-174 intersection. The analysis of the EIR alternatives insists that 1,000 ton a day of ore production was needed for financing and economic viability. On this basis, Alternative 4, which greatly reduced environmental impacts of cutting production 50%, was rejected. Yet, RDN, economic study, directly contradicts that assumption, showing that at 50%, they could still be quite profitable and pay off construction costs within two years. Also, the alternative analysis insists that the location of the production facilities must be the Brunswick site, right by my house, greatly impacting residents. Yet, the Centennial site, which has fewer homes around it, is also a suitable site, but using the Centennial site for the ore processing facility was not even assessed. Furthermore, under CEQA, the project alternatives must avoid or substantially lessen any of the significant effects of the project. In this case, the alternates must substantially lessen the EIR's identified and significantly unavoidable impacts due to noise, traffic, and aesthetics. None of the alternatives achieve this. Alternative 2 does remove the Centennial site from the project EIR, which avoids a major CEQA flaw, but it raises the mine waste pile at Brunswick to a massive 140 feet, putting it 50 feet higher toward the level of the adjacent residents, that adds more impact from noise and worsens aesthetic impact, pushing the pile above the tree line where it will be visible from a greater distance. And in reality, removing the Centennial site from the use permit does not eliminate multiple deficiencies still surrounding the Centennial cleanup. The plan is still held by the DTSC pending resolutions, and Rise must not be allowed to defer cleaning their polluted site up. In summary, even if one ignores all the significant impacts in the EIR that remain in adequately addressed and just considers the few of the EIR that does identify, the alternatives that were provided do not satisfy CEQA. None of them substantially lessen the significant impacts. They failed to correctly consider reduced production, failed to consider Centennial and Main Site. Alternative 2 simply removes one severe defect in the EIR, even though it is still listed as part of the project plan, and versus noise and aesthetics. Alternative 2 does not fix this flawed project. The EIR should not be certified, and the project denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
My name is Don Ravines. I'm in District 3. I'm a member of the County Energy Action Plan Working Group. In 2023, Nevada County Board of Supervisors adopted its objectives that included under economic development to implement tasks identified by the Nevada County Energy Action Plan. In 2024, the county is proposing an initiative to promote energy efficiency, renewable energy and storage capabilities, and develop a climate action plan. The Nevada County Energy Action Plan's goal is to reduce the annual grid supplied electricity the county will use in 2035 by 51% through energy efficiency measures. 13,000 households are targeted to save 42 million kilowatt-hours. This mine project will consume 49 million kilowatt-hours of electricity per year in direct conflict with the county's energy reduction goals. This eliminates the results of any energy-saving measures planned by the Energy Action Plan. The mine's electricity yearly use is equal to the yearly electric use of 5,570 homes in Nevada County. The total non-residential electricity use of the county in 2017 was 53 million kilowatt-hours. So this one mining project would almost match all other non-residential electric use in the county and wipe out the projected non-residential efficiency savings. Asking residents and business owners to cut down their use of electricity while allowing their large electricity use of the mine would be highly counterproductive. A primary goal of the Energy Action Plan is to reduce electricity to the grid by use of solar. The mine proposes no use of solar, and compared to other businesses, will be running 24 hours a day when for many hours no solar is available, putting extra pressure on the grid and battery storage. EIR for the mine fails to correctly identify a valid threshold for greenhouse gas emissions by assuming an outdated 10,000-ton threshold without any substantial evidence failing to consider the current state goals. Under CEQA, this EIR is totally inadequate to addressing the significant impacts of greenhouse gas emissions from Rise Gold's proposed mine. The mine operation is contrary to the county energy plans and will not comply with the county's strategic plan objectives. The Board of Supervisors must consider what direction the approval of the mine will take us. Do we want to do our part in combating the impacts of climate change as called for in the Energy Action Plan and Strategic Plan, or are we willing to contribute to the impacts? Thank you.
Don, thank you. Thanks for your services well on the EAP.
Hello. My name is Rob Katzenstein. I'm in District 3. I'm here to talk about the greenhouse gas emissions, which are significant and would wreck the county energy plans. The county should deny the Idaho-Maryland mine project and should not certify the final EIR. The EIR is inadequate in its assessment of greenhouse gas emissions. A valid threshold for greenhouse gas emissions was not set in the EIR. As stated in the EIR, CEQA guidelines allow a lead agency to determine thresholds, their own thresholds, for environmental impacts such as greenhouse gas emissions, and explicitly provides that an agency may consider thresholds adopted by other agencies, provided that such decision is supported by substantial evidence. The Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District has not set thresholds for greenhouse gas emissions. So has lead agency Nevada County just simply applied the 10,000 tons per year carbon dioxide emission threshold chosen by some other districts for this project. But Nevada County cannot simply assume that the justifications used by other air districts to adopt their thresholds also apply to Nevada County. And you all know our problems with smog coming up from the valley and our geography in relation to that. So the EIR failed to provide substantial evidence required by CEQA by just considering other district thresholds. In fact, the EIR provided no evidence beyond just copying what other districts used. And this is doubly wrong because there are other air districts originally adopted the 10,000-ton limit threshold to achieve the older 2006 statewide standard under California Assembly Bill 32, which is no longer consistent with the current statewide greenhouse gas reduction goals. Lots of numbers. In 2017, the California Air Quality Board Climate Change Scoping Plan stated, achieving no net additional increase in greenhouse gas emissions resulting in no contribution to greenhouse gas impacts is an appropriate overall objective for new development. In another draft EIR for a mine located in rural Bay Area District, the Sergeant Rance Quarry, under SB 32, they considered any increase in greenhouse gas emissions to be significant. In this view, the mine's 9,000 tons per year of emission should be considered significant and unmitigated. The EIR should have established a net zero threshold for greenhouse gas emissions from the proposed.
Thanks, Rob.
My name is Robbie D'Angelo. I live in District 4. This comment addresses the FEIR's failure to address the increased noise level of mine operations from the proposed height increase of the mine waste pile. The FEIR fails to adequately address the noise impacts to nearby residences which would result from increasing the height of the mine waste pile, engineered fill, on the Brunswick site. Alternative 2 of the DEIR proposes placing an additional 1.6 million tons of mine waste on the site, raising the height by 50 feet to 140 feet total height. This height increase would involve heavy equipment operations from a more elevated position with respect to the residential properties, all of which are located above the proposed fill area. With respect to the residential properties, this would potentially increase the noise levels at the properties as a result of the change to the straight-line distance to the residences, as well as other factors affecting sound attenuation, including atmospheric absorption, shielding by intervening topography or structures, ground absorption, and attenuation caused by tree cover. The increased height of the fill would likely worsen the noise levels at the residential properties as a result of the changes to these noise- affecting factors. The final response to this EIR comment has not considered the potential increase of residential noise due to the change in these factors, instead sidestepping the issue by referring to their unrelated response to a comment by Salter. The failure of the EIR to address this potential noise increase contributes to this EIR's total inadequacy. This grossly impaired EIR must not be certified. Thank you.
Thank you, Robbie.
Hello. My name is Greg Thrush. I live in District 3. The EIR for the Idaho-Maryland mine fails to address potentially significant impact of mine waste disposal. The mine plans to output 1,000 tons of sand tailings and waste rock per day. Under current plans to use Alternative 2, the mine waste will be dumped onto the engineered fill pile over the course of the first 11 years. After that, the mine plans to dispose of it through off-site sales. These are significant issues with, there are significant issues with the disposal of mine waste due to the potential to pollute ground and surface waters by leaching hazardous chemicals. This falls under the jurisdiction of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The Water Board classifies mine waste by Groups A, B, and C. Only Group C, which has relatively low levels of contaminants, is clean enough to be used for off-site sales. The Water Board requires mine waste testing to determine classification. Rise Gold did over 67,500 linear feet of exploratory drilling. Yet, they chose to test to only 11 feet to characterize what will be potentially over 25 million tons of waste rock. In the draft EIR, the Water Board and numerous other parties identified insufficient testing to determine whether the mine waste would be Group C suitable for off-site sales. Per the Water Board comments, the alternative scenario that the mining waste is not suitable for off-site use should be examined. The Water Board goes on to state that Rise should assess any constraints or challenges associated with waste disposal in case they can't do off-site sales for construction aggregate. They conclude with, the draft EIR should be revised to address this comment. However, no further testing was done, and alternatives were not assessed in the final EIR as suggested. As a result, the Water Board is requiring continuous mine waste testing, and per additions to the EIR, the project now contains the following restriction. The applicant shall not sell or utilize waste rock and tailings from the project for construction aggregate or for purposes off-site unless such material has been tested and confirmed to qualify as Group C mining waste. CEQA requires that the EIR give the public and decision-makers the most accurate and understandable picture practically possible on the project's likely near-term and long-term impacts. Clearly, the final EIR should have provided a realistic solution to what will happen if the mine waste isn't Group C. This final EIR fails to do that. This EIR should not be certified. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Can we have the next group of commenters, numbers 11 through 20, line up in the back of the chambers? Thank you.
Right here? Hello, Chair Bullock, members of the board. My name is Christine Alford, and I live in District 3. To follow up on what Greg Thrush had just mentioned, you're being asked to approve a project without knowing that the portion of the mine waste will actually qualify for Group C. And there is no realistic plan actually in place for continued mining operations if the mine waste can't actually be sold. The final EIR contains lengthy discussions trying to demonstrate that the mine waste is likely Group C. It also relies on that based on some selective spot testing on the Centennial site, which is covered with mine tailings that were actually removed from the ground prior to 1956. From that testing, the final EIR relies, as stated on page 2-950, claims that the historic mine waste that was tested has been determined to be Group C mining waste. First of all, the Water Board has not made that determination and likely will require more sophisticated kinetic testing. Secondly, the weathering and the leaching of those tailings, there's very little value on assessing what will actually come out of the mine now. Over the last 70 years, those materials have been exposed to the elements and had the ability to already mobilize any pollutants that were on them. Currently, the most accurate place to look for an estimate as to whether mine waste will be Group C is the mine drain itself. EPA test results show the mine drain flows that outflows into Wolf Creek have high levels of arsenic, barium, chromium, copper, lead, manganese, nickel, and zinc, and are definitely not Class C. The final EIR relies on speculative and inadequate provisions for the mine waste disposal, stating that the mine rock would not be mined until the mine waste characterization has been performed to ensure the rock will be suitable for off-site sales. Rock types that are not suitable for off-site sales would likely not be mined, and if mined, the waste rock would be placed underground, end quote. However, mine waste classified as Groups A and B requires specific management that must be determined by the Water Board and cannot automatically be placed underground. Backfilling waste rock and tailings is the exact scenario that has led to the polluted groundwater and discharges of so many of our existing mines in the area. This new element, the placement of Group A or B mine waste underground, was not included in the draft EIR. The final EIR is inadequate because it fails to address the potentially significant impact.
Thank you, Christine.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me now? Yeah. Closer? Oh, pull it down. Okay. My name is Josie Crawford, and I live in District 2. The proposed Idaho-Maryland mine has a significant mine waste problem. A key aspect of this project is the disposal of mine waste by off-site sales as aggregate. Aggregate production is a business which results in specific rock sizes and grades depending on the customer's project. Producers will be able to crush, must be able to crush, wash, sort, and deliver rock that meets the customer's specifications. There are at least 20 different types of aggregate produced by the regional vendors, and demand varies widely in grade and size. Aggregate producers must produce and stockpile numerous products, each with different markets. The mine proposes to export 1,000 tons a day of engineered fill, 1,000 tons. That's a euphemism for sand tailings and barren rock. A very fine sand or silt has limited market value. Barren rock will be crushed to approximately six inches, and these two products fulfill only a small portion of the aggregate market. To compete in the aggregate To compete in the aggregate market, significant processing of mine waste is required. A mine project assumes engineered fill can be sold as aggregate but does not include any of the facilities needed for processing and stockpiling. The EIR falsely assumes that the mine can meet specific demands for the aggregate market without providing a plan for how to store or produce the actual products. Compounding this error, the EIR mistakenly argues there's a substantial market in the region, stating that Sacramento County has less than 50% of its 50-year aggregate demand currently permitted. It also lists annual demand for Nevada County, Placer County, and Yuba City Marysville. The EIR concludes that there is sufficient market demand for engineered fill. This is a false conclusion based on selective excerpts from the Department of Conservation map sheets. In fact, the data shows that Sacramento County has enough aggregate for almost 30 years of demand already permitted. Plus, it shows that Nevada County, Placer County, and Yuba Marys—Yuba City Marysville have enough surplus aggregate to more than meet the 50-year demand of Sacramento County all already permitted. Furthermore, aggregate demand—oops, is—
Josie, thank you.
My name is Denny, and I live in District Three. In addition to concerns about the market for selling mine as waste aggregate, the mine project does not provide a credible plan to protect people and the environment from exposure to mine waste hazards. For instance, due to inadequate testing, the mine waste has not been classified as Group C by the Water Board. Yet, only Group C mine waste is safe enough to be sold or stored without restrictions. So it's not even known whether the waste can be stored at the Brunswick site, let alone whether or not it can be sold offsite. In addition, the EIR does not include the adequate asbestos testing needed to assess the potential cancer-causing hazard of airborne asbestos. The asbestos management plan sets a limit on asbestos levels, but it is unknown how much of the mine waste will be under that limit. And even if most of the mine waste is under the limit, it must be sold as restricted material, which requires strict oversight and scares away buyers. Also, the mine plans on exporting 1,000 tons of mine waste per day, but except in the onsite structures, which only hold about one day's worth of mine waste, there are no provisions for temporary storage of the waste during those days on which mine demand slows due to weather, irregular sales demands, delayed testing protocols, et cetera. In summary, this EIR is a recipe for disaster because the Water Board may not easily classify much of the waste as Group C. The aggregate market is already saturated. Mine waste is generally not saleable without further processing. Mine waste is generally not saleable because it's a restricted material, and there is no onsite storage for the excess mine waste. This EIR does not admit to any of these potential problems, nor does it provide a valid solution for these problems should they occur. As a result, this mine project fails to comply with SEQA in providing the project's likely near-term and long-term impacts. In no way is this mine ready to be permitted or this substandard EIR ready to be certified. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Correction, thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Gillian Blanchard. I'm a land use attorney with a home in Grass Valley, and I urge you to follow staff's recommendation and deny the rezone and variance for a project that has no basis here in modern-day Grass Valley. As staff has made clear, this project is detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of this community and does not comply with the surrounding land uses. Clearly, Rise's new attorney has never visited the site, which is surrounded by homes. Why would you certify a SEQA document for an incompatible project that cannot be approved? California law clearly states that when there is no project, there is no need to certify, and when the document is legally flawed—which it is here—you cannot certify. There is overwhelming evidence on the record from technical and legal experts establishing that the EIR does not comply with SEQA and that the project cannot be approved. To highlight just a few fatal flaws, the EIR fails to fully evaluate and mitigate significant impacts to water supply, biological resources, air quality hazards, and more. It relies on groundwater data that is not only out of date but has been disproven by hydrologists on the record. That's not just a disagreement of experts. That's evidence on the record proving that the EIR conclusions are false. The project fails to adequately prevent well impacts that will financially ruin your community. It also fails to include financial assurances in the event that this applicant causes environmental damage, as it has already done in other communities surrounding its other mine projects. The EIR fails on so many accounts that it would violate state law to certify this document, which stands as one of the most flawed documents I've seen in over 20 years of land use practice. Even if you deny this project—which we strongly recommend you do—certifying this EIR would leave this community exposed to the real threat of a future developer coming back relying on this document to ram a project through the approval process. This exact thing happened in Lafayette when a developer came back and pushed a housing project through relying on a seven-year-old EIR. And we'll be right back here with the same frustrations, only then you Supervisors will be bound by the analysis in the EIR, which is a legally deficient document. This project is totally inconsistent with the now residential area surrounding the site. Groundwater pumping 24 hours a day that depletes critical well water supply? Noise impacts every day, all day? These are just a few of the significant health and safety issues that cannot be ignored. The only way to solve this problem is to not certify the EIR and unequivocally deny this project. Do not be bullied by meritless threats.
Thank you, Gillian. Welcome, Izzy.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Elizabeth Martin. I live in Grass Valley, District Two. Thirty years ago—I first of all, I want to start off by saying I really think that the staff did an excellent job on the staff report. I thought it was very complete. I thought it was prudent and conservative, and that you should adopt their recommendations to deny the EIR, the land use permit, and set aside the other requests from this applicant. Thirty years ago, I was in this room as a Nevada County Planning Commissioner when people came down from the San Juan Ridge because their water and their wells had suddenly disappeared at the clinic, at the school, at the ranch, because the neighboring gold mine had accidentally disturbed the geology and had had a gush of water run through their mine, almost killing those guys and leaving them without water. I kept this in mind when Emperor Gold came before me again as Nevada County Planning Commissioner and asked us to permit a gold mine, and we put mitigations in there as best we could to protect. I later led the Sierra Fund in effort to try to understand the impact of the gold rush on the Sierra, and I worked with Diane Feinstein to bring money back to California and the U.S. EPA to evaluate the abandoned mines in this state. Based on that evaluation for priority, what are the most dangerous, what are the most important mines in the state to prioritize cleaning up? What was number one on the list? The Idaho Maryland Mine. The mine that is proposed to reopen a new mine on an old, unremediated mine. Now, we can talk about complexity. We can talk about unique circumstances, but what we have here is unknowns and unknowable unknowns in what's going to happen in the geology underground. The water quality impacts are very serious where we live. The Empire Mine was draining metallic drainage into our creeks. That got worse because of geological change. Suddenly, the city of Grass Valley and the Water Board had to hold accountable the people that owned the mineral rights that was discharging that metallic discharge into Wolf Creek, Newmont Mining Company. They had to build a water treatment plant that has to work in perpetuity to clean up the discharge from a mine that's been closed for 50-plus years. In perpetuity? How do you create a financial assurance mechanism? How do you create a financial cost estimate for a mine reclamation with a potential perpetual water quality discharge? I don't think this gets close to describing the cost of this mine. I ask that you support your brilliant staff and uphold their recommendations. Feel free to ask me if you've got any questions if you'd like. I did just work with the Governor to reform mining law in the state of Calif—
Thank you, Izzy.
My name's Kristy Hubbard. I live in District Three. I'm speaking on behalf of the Wells Coalition, a group of well owners and residents near the Idaho Maryland Mine. Our purpose is to protect our only source of water, our wells. Last May, we submitted a group letter signed by the very people who have the most to lose if this project is approved. It's signed by over 200 well owners and represents 125 properties, the vast majority of which are within roughly a half mile of the mine's mineral rights area. This letter asks that the county reject the EIR and vote no on the project. Huge risks are not being addressed. The EIR asserts that stronger mitigations are, quote-unquote, "not necessary" because no significant impact to domestic water wells are predicted. But a prediction is only an educated guess, not a certainty. And in this case, it's based on an analysis that has serious flaws. The stakes are just too high to get this wrong. The county's own economic impact report revealed this proposed mine is unprecedented in its proximity to so many homes. They couldn't find any mines to use as comparables that were like this. And even the most basic understanding of NID costs and timelines tell us that if predictions are wrong, it could cost the county, NID, and individual homeowners tens of millions of dollars and years—or even possibly decades—to connect a permanent water supply to each property. So several of my neighbors from the Wells Coalition will be sharing key arguments from that letter in their comments yet to come, and I've handed in copies. But what I wanted to also say is, this whole situation reminds me of a quote attributed to Mark Twain: "Whiskey's for drinking, water is for fighting over." Rise Gold claims their constitutional rights have been violated and is threatening a lawsuit for taking their right to profit from their property, but well owners have rights too. Indeed, we have priority water rights that are protected by both case law and Rise's own deed of ownership. The simple act of opening the mine would be a taking of our water. Our EIR makes unsupported—the EIR in this project makes unsupported assertions that a 10% drop in groundwater levels is okay, and that diverting treated water down South Fork Wolf Creek is acceptable too. But neither are okay at all. The water belongs to us first. Our final message is simple. Please reject the EIR and vote no on the project. If Rise follows through on their threat to sue you, know that the Wells Coalition would absolutely back you if you did a no vote, and we are also organized and ready to fight. Why Rise ever thought it would be a good idea to open a mine under this many homes with wells is really a mystery. We're begging you, say no.
Thank you, Kristy.
My name is Tim Augburn. I live in District One. Let me start out by saying Nevada County needs to protect itself financially. Many aspects of the mine have been discussed at great length, except for one: financial assurances. The requirement for financial assurances is clearly stated in the general plan. Policy 1713 states, "The county shall require satisfactory forms of security bonds from all mining projects to cover all damages that may stem from the project." So let's take a look at what happened to our neighbors who did not have sufficient financial assurances. The Jamestown Mine in Tuolumne County closed in 94 due to an environmental accident. It cost the county $10.2 million in today's dollars to clean that up. The Siskon Mine out on the ridge, which was just discussed, closed in 97 for the same reason. It cost that community over $5.8 million in today's dollars to clean up. We don't want that to happen here. So Rise Gold is required to provide financial assurances. How much? I came up with $131 million. Now, I did that based on what's typical throughout the United States for financial assurances for gold mines. The nine bonds I came up with, the general liability environmental mitigation bond of $80 million, general environmental cleanup bonds, $15, cash account of $5 million to pay for county staff to oversight the mine's monitoring programs, domestic well monitoring, $2 million, NID requirement was $14 million, air quality monitoring, $2 million, water, $2 million, seismic, $3.5 centennial—I included that—$7.6, a total of $131. So in summary, what I'd like to say is, I respectfully ask that the Board secure sufficient financial assurances from Rise Gold to protect the county as part of any request to open the mine. Not only is it the law, securing financial resources doesn't cost the county anything, but it could cost the county millions if you don't. By the way, I've given the Clerk of the Board all of my documentation to add up to the various numbers that I gave you, so if you have any questions about how I arrived with those numbers, the Clerk of the Board has that information.
Thank you, Tim.
My name is Mary Anderson. I live in District Three.
Mary, can you pull the mic down to your—right there in front of you? Yeah, thank you.
There?
Yes.
Okay. I live in District Three, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Wells Coalition. My home is among 378 properties that qualify for the domestic well monitoring program described in the EIR. I'm here today to ask you to deny this project and not certify an EIR that completely fails to protect well owners like me. Expert reviewers identified numerous defects in the groundwater model. For example, the EIR relies on sparse patches of well monitoring data from over 15 years ago. This is inadequate under SEQA because current baseline data is needed to assess potential impacts to groundwater prior to determining mitigations. The EIR dismissed these concerns, but in contradictory fashion agreed more data is needed for validating the model. Current well performance data is key to establishing water quality and determining when a well has gone down or doesn't recharge quickly enough. It's also the linchpin in determining what threshold should be used to determine if an impact is significant. Experts call the EIR's choice of a 10% drawdown in water level arbitrary and invalid. The EIR's addition of domestic well monitoring program for 378 properties is a feeble attempt to address the missing baseline data, but it does little to ease my concerns or those of well owners who are excluded because they live in NID-served areas. The problem—program is too little, too late, and too short. It's included as a condition of approval, but it is not a mitigation. Instead of following SEQA and collecting data before evaluating the program, this program promises data after the project is approved. Monitoring is scheduled for only 12 months and takes just one water quality sample. Experts who commented on the ER tell us a minimum of three years are needed to collect valid water quantity data, and water quality should be tested at least twice a year. The program also fixes five—expires five years after dewatering, offering no protection for accidents that occur in the future. The bottom line is that well owners are being told to trust that nothing will go wrong with their water supply for 80 years based on assumptions and speculation. with their water supply for 80 years based on assumptions and speculation. The EIR compounds the uncertainty with feeble mitigations and peace-of-mind programs stitched together with vaguely worded promises. I respectfully request you just say no to both the project and the EIR.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, Paul Schwartz, District One.
What was your name? I'm sorry.
Paul Schwartz.
Paul, thank you, Paul.
The Rise Gold proposal to reopen the Idaho Maryland mine raises many issues. Nevada County staff, professionals, informed residents, public sector engineers and scientists, Nevada County Planning Commission found the proposal in the EIR in conflict with Nevada County general plan, incomplete, unfocused, based on poor science, and ignore and misrepresents major issues. Reject the proposal in the EIR, support the findings of county staff and the planning commission, and trust the voices of over a thousand of our neighbors. Our economy and environment in Nevada County is fragile. We survived the destructive gold mining era. Many communities did not. Through the ups and downs of the '70s, '80s, '90s, and into the 2020s, we grew a balanced economy that has most metrics needed to be sustainable into the future. Aside from mitigating the environmental disaster of our gold mining history, we are faced with global impacts of climate change, electric grids that are marginally reliable, water resources that are both essential and uncertain. The Rise Gold mining proposal would impact all of these fragile, evolving elements. Visit any mining town in western United States, and you will see communities in decline. The wealth from mining does not stay local, but the impacts do. The energy and water required to support large-scale mining taxes, local infrastructure, leaving little room for clean industry to expand. The challenge to county and state regulators to police the environmental, safety, and infrastructure pressures inherent in large-scale mining are immense. Resources for affordable housing, homelessness, infrastructure, efforts to fire safe our communities, and economic development will be challenged by the cost of oversight. What are our responsibilities in reducing our carbon footprint to meet local and state goals? How do we assess the health consequences of increased particulate to pre-existing high levels in the air we breathe? How do we ensure reliable water supply for 300-plus homes in the Idaho Maryland mine neighborhood? Will we need to add technical expertise within the root center to provide oversight? No mining project similar to this proposal has been approved in the state of California when located close to residential neighborhoods. Like the frog in the pot on the stove, when the heat is turned up, the planning decisions we make today will slowly reveal consequences for decades to come. Reject the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Can we have the next group of commenters line up? We're at numbers 21 to 30 in the back of the chambers. Thank you.
Etchum, I live in District Three. I'm a member of the Wells Coalition. I'm a 45-year practicing real estate right-of-way professional and designated member of the Appraisal Institute International Right-of-Way Association. I've done extensive consulting regarding matters of easements and rights away, much of which has been for Nevada Irrigation District. In my opinion, the EIR is flawed and should not be certified. One of the most egregious faults in the assumption that risk to local wells can easily be mitigated by connecting to NID. The EIR dismisses the enormous complexity of connecting properties with dry wells to NID and the very real potential for lengthy timeframes involved to accomplish that task. The EIR comments commits to providing NID connections to 30 properties along East Bennett Road, and more generally, any other impacted wells, but denies the need for financial assurance or plans for connecting to NID. I'd like to help you understand the complexity, which coincidentally serves as a cautionary tale for all the hundreds of other wells in the area. According to NID Water Service Regulation, Section 10.09, water connections to NID must front on an NID water main. If you review the East Bennett parcel maps in the EIR, you will find there are approximately 20 to 30 identified parcels that do not front on East Bennett Road. All parcels without required frontage must petition NID to obtain a variance for service with absolutely no guarantee that a variance will be approved by NID. Additionally, all meters are set at the street. Each property owner must extend a private service pipeline from a meter to their property. This presents two serious issues. One, some parcels have significant elevation gain from the meter to their home, which may require a pump to ensure sufficient water pressure. A pipeline and pump require installation, and pump consumes electricity. None of these issues and associated costs were considered in the EIR. Two, as a condition of the variance, NID will require these private service pipelines to have easements across neighboring properties, many of which may not exist at this time. NID requires legal access to be demonstrated, and there is no guarantee that the required easement will be granted across neighboring parcels. Think about how these issues would play out for the other 378 properties identified in the EIR in this domestic well monitoring program, or the well owners who weren't even included in that list. The EIR fails to address these serious limitations or associated costs of proposed NID water service and mistakenly assumes that all NID water line extensions are physically and legally possible. The old adage, "That the devil is in the details," most certainly applies here. Just say no to the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Perazzi. I live in District Three. I'm also a member of the Wells Coalition. My house is located above the abandoned Idaho Maryland mine. I moved to Grass Valley in 1990, and six months later, Emperor Gold began their attempt to reopen the Idaho Maryland mine. That process dragged on for almost nine years. Then around 2001, M-Gold began its attempt to reopen the mine. That process lasted seven years, ending in 2008. Around 2018, Rise Gold began its attempt to reopen the mine, a process that's taken us about five years to get to the point we're at today. Over the last 30 years, I've spent 20 of them confronting the mine. With each proposal to reopen the mine, I've literally spent hundreds of hours fighting for the protection of our wells, as have so many others in the community. We don't want to have to relive this constant burden of protecting our wells from the mine. The bottom line for well owners is that this EIR does not afford its protection. NID has requested a bond to protect well owners from impacts due to dewatering of the mine, but this EIR dismisses the request as, quote, "not needed." Even if the bond were in place, it could easily take two or more years for impacted wells to actually get NID service. This EIR does not protect us. Corporations with gold fever will undoubtedly come back knocking on Nevada County's door again, and when they do, if this project and EIR are approved, a precedent will have been set by the county that doesn't include a guarantee of NID water for impacted wells, leaving us yet again with the burden of pleading with the county to protect our wells. To paraphrase Mark Twain again, "It's much easier to stay out of trouble than it is to get out of trouble." By certifying this EIR and project, the county is inviting more trouble for the community and itself. Because of the overwhelming evidence that this EIR ignores and all its inadequacies, I hear—I am here today to ask the Board of Supervisors to deny the project and also not certify the final EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Kane. I've lived in the county most of my life, and I now happily live in District One. A lawyer friend confided to me that on his first day of training, his instructors instilled two indelible rules for law practice. Rule one was, "Get the fee." That sound like good advice. And rule two is, "Never confuse the law with justice." So far, these mine hearings have involved only the law. We've had our necessary debates about CEQA, the EIR, vested rights, but we haven't discussed notions of justice. To Rise Gold, justice would be Nevada County issuing it a permit. To us, justice would be the county denying the permit, having established that this 80-year project would be environmentally ruinous and hazardous to our welfare. We locals might sense justice if the proposal offered something useful, like a park or a college, but this mine would only amount to outsiders extracting profit at this community's devastating expense. I've heard us accused of being nimby's, "Not in my backyard." Well, I'd like to offer a truer acronym, which is NIABY, "Not in anybody's backyard." Because we don't need more gold. Gold has a few industrial and aesthetic uses, but almost all of it is simply hoarded. According to the U.S. Geological Survey, the world's gold depositories store 205,000 tons. Fort Knox alone holds 4,500 tons of gold. So if you're concerned about some gold deficit, you could promote justice instead by focusing on genuinely threatened entities like potable water, arable soil, and breathable air. Justice requires recognizing gold mining as an infamously destructive endeavor. That prospector on Nevada County's seal dipping his pan in the Yuba was long ago replaced by bulldozers and 20-ton hauling trucks. So again, please say no.
Thank you, Jeff.
A little bit higher. Hello, thank you. My name is Dr. Aaron Zettler Mann, District Three, and I am speaking to you today as the Executive Director of Circle, the South Yuba River Citizens League. Circle has been advocating for the health of the Yuba watershed for more than 40 years. Today is the end of a long process. At every inflection point, the people of this community, county officials, and county council have clearly stated that this project is bad for the county. The planning commission unanimously voted to reject the woefully inadequate environmental impact report and necessary changes to zoning. Rise Gold made an attempt at a vested rights claim, which was found to be indefensible. And now all eyes are on you, with the clear expectations of this community and the president of the county and county council. What I want to highlight today is the clear choice for the county, to adapt to changing times and values where wild places, recreation, and resilience carry us into the future or backwards, viewing this place as something that is only valuable to the extent that we destroy, extract, and ship resources elsewhere. The final EIR found significant and unavoidable impacts on aesthetic, traffic, and noise. These are the hallmarks of extractive mining, not the future. They set us backwards as an attractive place for people, for Circle staff, to want to stay and raise a family. Rise Gold claims that they will be selling the mine tailings in Sacramento, that there's a market there to deal with the destruction that it would otherwise be piled on the ground here. The economics do not work. Trucking rock is incredibly expensive, and businesses in the Yuba goldfields are meeting that aggregate market demand today and for the next 100 years in partnership with restoration. And the restoration economy is here today. Circle and our partners have moved more than 2 million cubic yards of existing mine tailings in the Lower Yuba River. We've restored more than 500 acres of meadow and are partnering across the watershed to create fire resilience on 275,000 acres of forests. Circle is bringing in tens of millions of dollars into this county to do restoration work, and we aren't even the only ones. And the difference is more than just real jobs today versus promised jobs someday in the future. Circle's work is in restoring, fixing, and repairing, and restarting the natural processes which were destroyed during the last mining gold rush. Your choice is clear. We can continue to move forward into a future where we recognize what makes this place special and attractive, or we can fall backwards.
Thank you, Dr. Mann.
Hi, I'm Jim Baer, resident of Grass Valley. I'm going to follow in the tradition of Mark Twain. The hardest book to write was the shortest one. This is very short. I've reviewed our key documents, reports, and presentations on the DER and the FER for relevance to the newly proposed Alternative Two. In looking through thousands of pages of submitted documents to the county, I question why was a project with two sites, Brunswick and Centennial, ever proposed? We conclude that Alternative Two still has significant negative impacts that cannot be mitigated. In addition, the EPA just last week enacted stronger air quality standards, which will impact the silica and asbestos pollution mitigation measures that are currently in the FER. Here are some of our documented rebuttals to the EIR that still apply. Number one, we published detailed analysis of asbestos sampling and monitoring described in the EIR. We found the measurements statistically invalid and not in compliance with state regulations. Number two, airborne asbestos will still be released at toxic and unmanageable levels when tailings are processed on the surface and piled to something like 160 feet high in the open air, or will still be transported in significant distances, as will engineered film. Number three, we established that the size of airborne asbestos fibers is too small to be treated as dust, soot, or particulates. Typical fibers are less than half a micron—very small—travel many miles, just like smoke does, and penetrate deeply into the lungs, where it takes just a few fibers to cause lung cancer. DER commenters, who are medical doctors, verify this, Doctors Chris Newsom, Jeff Kane, Dennis and Barbara Drew, and they warned us of asbestos as a particularly dangerous thing. So the last number five is that the FER violations of CEQA guidelines in the seven places that I've identified require complete descriptions of mitigation measures, and these measures have not been provided or addressed. So hundreds of comments provide irrefutable evidence that the mine FAIR is inadequate even for Alternative Two, and I'd like to submit copies of some of the documentation to the county clerk. Thanks so much for the time you've put into this. It's been—really been heroic.
Thanks, Jim. You can give those to our clerk in the lobby, if you would, please.
My name is Debbie Lind. I live in District Three. The final environmental impact report failed to establish valid groundwater and well impact thresholds. The EIR used the results of a study that used simulation software and which concluded draining a well down 20 to 40% could damage a well. Unfortunately, the study is not relevant. In the case of the mine, wells will not be subjected to a single drawdown from pumping, but rather a permanent lowering of the groundwater. Then, using this inappropriate study, the mine EIR concludes that the water in a well could be lowered by 10% from its average level and still provide the owner with 100% safety factor. Scientifically, this arbitrary 100% safety factor is nonsense. Think about it. And where does the 100% safety factor come from? Half of 20%? What is it the 100% of? But aside from the mine's questionable interpretation of some arbitrary— But aside from the mine's questionable interpretation of some arbitrary study results, the bottom line is that any reduced amount of well water has a negative impact on the quantity of water available to the well owner, in effect, taking a well owner's water without permission or compensation. And well owners whose wells are already marginal in meeting the owner's needs may be particularly at risk of suffering from reduced water capacity and may even completely lose the function of their well. The high probability of future droughts will make the potential for a very negative impact from the mine's drawdown of groundwater and its impact on private wells even worse. The EIR fails to provide a valid justification for allowing a mining project to reduce the quantity of a homeowner's well water by 10%. To determine a valid justification for allowing this, the threshold for the amount of water a well could afford to be drawn down must be based on actual performance criteria of each well over at least a three years of active monitoring. Basing the allowable drawdown of a person's water on a faulty interpretation of a computer simulation is wholly unacceptable. Please do not allow this. We are homeowners, not a simulated software experiment. Do not certify the CIR, please. Thank you for the opportunity to share these concerns with you.
Thank you, Debbie. Doug, could you help her adjust the mic? Thank you, sir.
I'm Anita Walthudle, and I live in District Three. I'm one of the many hardworking and unpaid people who have studied both the draft EIR and massive final EIR. I've looked closely at the mountain of comments that were submitted and have become part of the report's database. I've made public comments several times over the past years, commenting specifically on air pollution from asbestos particles and noise and vibration, all of which defy mitigation as required by SEQA. Rise Gold has indicated that they are unmitigable, in other words, not able to be mitigated, and so they have chosen to ignore them almost completely. Today, I have chosen to shift my focus to seismic concerns, which also are unmitigable, but cannot be ignored. Entitlement is required as part of the proposed project and preferred Alternative Two, which allows for development with a 100-foot building setback associated with a fault zone at the Brunswick industrial site, where surface mining facilities could be related to the underground mining operation, according to the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code. Section L. Two, which speaks of a parcel and map amendment dating back to February 1987, requires a 200-foot building setback from the seismic fault. The mine proposal would require overriding this section, possibly starting with a possibility zoning to allow for surface mining in the first place. This would be a significant change to the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code. The County Land Use and Development Code is clear and useful. Please do not gut it for a mine proposal that has so many other serious flaws. Can we please move to the chase and kiss the mine goodbye right now? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nina.
Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. How will Rise's plan affect your life? Will everyone reap huge benefits from this project? Rise says so. Yet we know what Rise has said has rarely failed to be disproven. Will the coffers of our county reap huge dividends if this project is approved? The info Rise provided that was used to solidify the economic report says so. But that's it. Rise has promised everything under the sun, but we know that the majority of what Rise purports is nothing more than a bag of rainbows, designed to fool the unwise into accepting a community destroying ecological disaster. This project will destroy life, from the microorganisms that reside in Wolf Creek to the citizens that are killed by potential traffic accidents involving huge rock-laden trucks and to the citizens that succumb to the debilitating disease mesothelioma. Liberty is the right of every citizen here in Grass Valley. Will your liberties stay how it is now? Or will the liberty of every citizen be infringed upon by excessive delays in everyday traffic that will be exacerbated by Rise's plans of dozens of massive vehicles entering our roadways every day for hours upon hours? Will the citizens enjoy the liberty to take walks out of doors when they know that large amounts of asbestos are being released daily due to the storage and compaction of large amounts of serpentine rock? Liberty is ability to do what one pleases without fear or trepidation of being harmed in any way. Pursuit of happiness, another American ideal. Will your happiness be what it is now, or will it be degraded due to the failing of your private water supply, which may happen to hundreds if Rise's plan to dewater a large amount of our existing aquifers comes true? Will your happiness be sustained when the value of your home, your most valuable asset, plummets, leaving you an entirely new financial position? Will your pursuit of happiness be hampered by the potential inability to sell your property, your home, your nest egg, due to the heavy industrial complex operating 24/7, mere minutes from your door? Will your pursuit of happiness be overridden by a consortium of investors that was initiated by a convicted destroyer of once pristine lands and waterways? My life will be affected in a harmful manner. My liberty will become worthless. My pursuit of happiness will be pushed to the wayside by a foreign corporation. I believe yours will also. My life will be... Okay. When this mine first opened 170 years ago, the men that proposed projects that could potentially destroy the good ways of life that the common folk enjoyed were often tarred and feathered and run out of town on a rail. My heart yearns for the return of those norms. Now, what about the communities downstream? How will they be affected? Will your decisions become fodder for lawsuits filed against Nevada County by a green...
Thank you, Mark.
My name's...
Yeah, we can hear you.
Good. My name's Barbara Ravines, and I live in District Three, and I'm here to say no to the mine. SEQA requires that an EIR consider a reasonable range of alternatives that will foster informed decision-making and reduce impacts. The Rise EIR analysis is flawed because it failed to provide realistic alternatives that could greatly reduce the project's significant impacts on aesthetics, noise, energy, and transportation. The EIR defines the project so narrowly that a few alternatives could meet its objectives. In speculative defense of the project's narrowly defined objectives, the EIR contends that setting a high ore product production level was necessary in order to finance and construct a mine that will take in excess of $100 million to construct. The EIR ignores evidence showing that a mining project with lower production would still be economically viable. The economic report of the proposed project conducted for the county showed that the project would be profitable even assuming very low production. The report concludes a high-end scenario based on assumed yearly production of 108,400 ounces of gold. By the way, Rise admits that their SEC reports that there is no current data to support that 100,840 ounces of gold. Under this scenario, based on no current facts, the mine would yield a profit of almost $112 million every year, clearly enough to fund their construction costs. The RDN reports that... Excuse me. However, even under the low-end scenario, in which the mine would produce 26,500 ounces annually, which is the only number supported by exploration data from M-Gold in 2002, the mine would still be profitable with a profit of over $27 million a year, funding construction costs in about four years. Even if production were cut in half from the low-end scenario, mine operations would still yield 25% profit for over $5 million a year. The EIR should have included the more flexible objectives with respect to the project's output. The alternatives analysis is inadequate and fails to achieve its purpose under SEQA. I respectfully request that you...
Thank you, Barbara.
My name's Martha Turner, and I live in District Three. First, I want to just say that I appreciate the weight and the gravity of the decision that you all are faced with by the end of this hearing, and thank you for your service to our county.
Can you bring the mic a little bit closer? Thank you.
Thank you for your service to our county. This comment is related to the flawed analysis of the correlation between mine water levels and well water levels. In the project's EIR, their consultant, EMKO, states that the difference in the measurements from the Brunswick shaft versus those from the domestic wells indicate that there are not any direct connections via fractures between the domestic wells and any of the underground mine workings. However, had the consultant taken the time to do a proper analysis of the Brunswick shaft water flow, they would have discovered, as have prior consultants, that the reason why there is not, does not appear to be a direct connection between the wells and the mine, and it has nothing to do with a lack of fractured rock between the two. It has to do with the East Eureka Drain. The water from the Brunswick shaft flows out of the mine at the East Eureka Drain at an elevation of 2,497 feet directly into Wolf Creek. There's no coincidence that the water level in the Brunswick shaft averages 2,497 feet, because whenever the water level gets any higher than that, it flows out through this drain. Since the mine water drains out as soon as it rises above 2,497 feet, the Brunswick shaft would easily be, could easily be receiving inflow from well water, even though it may not be apparent. Therefore, the mine's insistence that, quote, "A lack of seasonal pattern in the mine water levels indicates that the mine workings are not directly connected by the wells", this is worse than meaningless, because the mine and the wells may well be connected. This error in logic has a potential to do great harm to the wells of the neighboring residents and through the unanticipated well drawdown. This type of logic error is just one of the many errors which haunts this EIR and underscores the importance of not certifying such a flawed document. Please say no, both to the mine's permit and to the certification of this substandard EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Can we have the next group of commenters line up in the back of the chambers, numbers 31 to 40? Thank you.
Tony Loria, District Three, and member of the Wells Coalition. Thank you, Board, and those behind the scenes for your years of hard work. Experts, environmentalists, attorneys, businesses, and residents have all come together against this horrible plan. The legacy of existing contaminated mines is a promise to the devastation this project would unleash. And when the inevitable happens, who will pay the price? Not the applicant. Does anyone really think there would be no disasters in 80 years of operation? Banks Island and Siskon Mine didn't even make it one year. For over three decades, my family has nurtured a beautiful sanctuary we call home. To be forced to watch it become a collateral casualty is beyond unbearable. The applicant does not deserve to profit at our expense. The cumulative effects outlined in the EIR are outrageous. More than 80 impacts combine into a 24/7, 365, 80-year nightmare. SEQA is clear on the significance of cumulative impacts, and we know how this proposal represents a worst-case cumulative effect scenario for us and the environment. Lost clean air, energy, tourism, water, businesses, shattered tranquility, and quality of life. Those forced to relocate would face not just unlivable conditions, but substantial devaluation of property. And those of us that were among the unfortunate numbers to lose our clean water well would see a total loss. And who will pay the price when it all goes south? For years, we've confronted morally reprehensible statements claiming no impacts or a green operation, but California's 47,000 abandoned contaminated mines tells what really comes with this industry. We cannot fathom any of you believing this is what you see for our future in exchange for the promise of a few jobs. This is incompatible land use in a densely populated area and contradicts the positive exponential growth we have witnessed over the past 70 years since this toxic greed industry ended. The overwhelming majority of residents vehemently oppose this proposal. We implore you to make the decision unanimous against safeguarding our unique county by preserving its economics, health, and happiness. Let our collective voice resonate in your decision-making, ensuring the legacy we leave for our future generations remains one of respect, responsibility, and care. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
My name is Peter Alsing. I live in District Three. Airborne asbestos is hazardous to inhale, leading to lung cancer and other diseases. The Idaho-Maryland Mine, EIR, does not provide enough data to determine the potential impacts of airborne asbestos, and the asbestos management plan for preventing hazardous emissions is inadequate. Very limited asbestos testing was done. As the Air Quality Board stated, it would be shortsighted to commit to the plan for the entire life of the mine, based on the few samples that have been tested so far. The plan was developed to limit emissions. Under the plan, if asbestos concentrations on any 1,000-ton lot of mined minerals were put to three-month rolling average asbestos concentration over a threshold of .01%, it would not be allowed to be exported. A key problem is accurate and timely testing. It takes two weeks to get the results. The EIR has no provisions for stockpiling materials while waiting for results, and no temporary storage on the surface is provided. To avoid the need for stockpiling mined materials, the plan states that the exploratory drilling tests will determine what can be mined in advance. Then grab samples will be taken as the rock is loaded into silos for deployment, but the testing is too sparse. The loading into silos of 1,000 tons of rock requires about 166 six-ton skip loads. This means that the grab test will only capture, on the average, about one out of 55 skip loads, and even then, the three grab samples will be mixed together to form one combined test. Examination of how this system may fail reveals that large quantities of mined waste could pass through undetected, and though the plan talks about what happens when the delayed testing showed that the threshold was exceeded, it doesn't actually provide a credible solution or adequate oversight. Lastly, it's important to note that all exported mined waste from this mine must be classified as restricted materials. Aggregate suppliers in the region have indicated they do not handle restricted materials because there's no market for them, and they already have abundant aggregate sources regionally. In conclusion, the EIR does not provide adequate data on asbestos concentrations and fails to adequately address processing and disposal of asbestos-bearing mined waste. This is a serious unresolved problem. Please say no to this EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Peter.
Hello, respected Board members. My name is Marion Blair, and I live in District Three. I represent Earth Justice Ministries, a faith-based group dedicated to the humanitarian and environmental justice. Earth Justice Ministries takes action to protect people and their environment against the ever-increasing onslaught of destructive practices which not only affect local communities, but also have a global impact. I am also a well-credentialed scientist who has studied the EIR for this project in detail. I have commented on its flawed environmental assessments and mitigation measures many times, both in writing and in person. It is for these reasons that I speak to you today. You well know that a vast majority of this Nevada County community is strongly opposed to the IMM project. Our community is vibrant and savvy, and our ongoing fight to stop mining in our area is reasonable and sound. We treasure what we have together in this wonderful space. You have heard and read most of our arguments about noise, toxic metals, air pollution, traffic, impacts to water, impacts to human health, and more. Prioritizing profit for a few over sustainability for all is an equity and rights concern for local communities, which includes the indigenous people of our region. This land is heritage Nishtenon land, which was never ceded to early settlers or the government. The cultural resources of these indigenous people's ancestral land and livelihoods were virtually destroyed by gold mining, yet the various tribes have had a little say in the process, in this process for reopening yet another gold mine. Our honor and responsibility require us to provide care and guardianship to this land and its people. Life and health depend on living and working in right relationship with the earth. In this light, we weighed the pros and cons of the reopening of the mine and concluded that the many risks inherent in this project far outweigh any potential benefits to our community. I will repeat what I stated previously at a planning commission meeting. Earth Justice Ministry's mission statement includes the following: "We connect faith to actions that bring hope for the earth, the human family, and the community of life to further the cause of peace, justice, and healing of the earth." The IMM project will not bring hope for the human family, nor will it bring healing for the earth. Enough is enough. We are tired of this struggle that is putting tremendous stress on our community. We respectfully ask that, as our elected officials, you put an end to this proposed project and say no to the EIR once and for all now. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you, Mary.
Good morning. My name is Christie Barton. I live in District One. In an effort to keep the toxic mine waste from washing into our lakes, streams, and wells, the Water Board has developed a three-tiered classification system, Group A, Group B, and Group C. Group A is mine waste that is most toxic, Group B, mine waste, and when in Group C being the least toxic. Both Group A and B mine waste require special monitoring and handling and cannot be stored on-site nor sold off without restrictions. RISE does not want the waste classified as Group A or B. In fact, the success of the entire project depends on having its waste classified as C. Even the Water Board says that they, the mine, will need to characterize and classify the mine waste in its correct waste group. Possibly for fear of learning that much of their waste is not Group C, the mine has still had not waste, had not had their rock adequately tested and classified. This may explain why the mine project spends many, many pages of the EIRA kind of dancing around that waste is often toxic, but that waste from that mine is no exception. After the pages of irrelevant information, and the best they can say about it is that their main mine waste might likely also be classified as Group C waste. Speculation for this criticism should be clearly involved, resolved with the EIRA and not postponed to some time in the future that's not acceptable. However, despite the identification of the issue, the waste shall, still has not been tested, which means that the Water Board warns that, quote, "The applicant shall not sell or utilize waste, rock, or tailings from the project for construction, aggregate, and fill processes offside unless the material has been tested, confirmed, and qualified as Group C," unquote. The EIR fails to resolve the critical question as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. Consider this: The U.S. EPA tests the water flowing out of the mine along Wolf Creek in 2019 and detected arsenic over 10 times the threshold of value and lead at a very high rate. I ask you not to permit this faulty EIR.
We understand you. Thank you, Christie.
My name is Larry Engel, District One. I live near the Wolf Creek. This is not just about existing mine, mine wells situations. It's about new wells that have to come into play as the climate changes. In addition, Gray versus Madera County proves that the EIR's mitigation proposals are not just wrong, but as a matter of law, they're unsustainable. That case rejected such mitigation. Exactly. More importantly, RISE plans to de-water 24/7, 365 for 80 years, and it's going to drop our water table. Now, that's a multifaceted problem, including, you know, killing forests and vegetation on the surface, but more importantly, every single property owner above and around that mine owns that groundwater in first priority. The California Supreme Court case in City of Barstow in Pasadena say that's absolutely right. So how is it that they get the right to take away our groundwater? They talk about competing rights. They talk about due process. What about ours? We have competing rights that are utterly incompatible between the surface owners and the underground miners underneath us. That is never dealt with here. No one talks about that. Why? I mean, it's obvious, right? I mean, it's in confusion. It shouldn't be disputed. In addition, we have, as surface owners, rights to lateral and sub adjacent support, which includes support from groundwater. That's what keeps the surface from subsiding. And to protect us from subsidence, we have cases like Keystone, which is a U.S. Supreme Court case that everyone should read, and in California, the court decision is Marin Muni Water. Those cases make it clear that what they propose to do just can't happen. It's a legal matter. Now, they may try, but you're in the middle, and they're going to leave you holding the bag, because they're not going to be here when the ultimate accountability comes due here. Underground mining is different, for many reasons, than the surface mining, which is all they talk about. And the reason, among others, is that we have surface owners. Surface owners don't exist in their quarries and the other cases that they cite, but they do exist in this undermining conflict. So somehow, that issue has to be addressed, and it's not. In addition, the objections that have been filed so far by many, many, many people do, in fact, rebut everything you...
Thank you, Larry.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be part of this process. I'm Sid Godfrey, the project manager at the Sierra Fund. Founded in 2001, the nonprofit Sierra Fund works to restore resilient ecosystems and communities in the Sierra Nevada. We've worked for over a decade in mining issues. Our comments were prepared by Associate Director Carrie Monahan, who's also faculty at CSU Chico in the Geology Department. Her PhD is in hydrology with an emphasis in water quality, and she has studied the impact of mining to the Sierra for the last 15 years. The summary is that the project lacks a sufficient water monitoring plan. The proponent did an inadequate job of testing deposits to project water discharge, and the proponent lacks adequate financial assurances for reclamation. The county should reject this proposal. The impacts to water quality are significant, long-lasting, and expensive. The mine project proponent has not done their due diligence to address water quality issues, and we know these water quality issues are present due to the current EPA cleanup on the Centennial site. The Centennial site has the waste rock from the Idaho-Maryland mine in large piles, and water monitoring has shown that there are elevated levels of known contaminants from this pile of waste rock, including lead, arsenic, hexavalent chromium, manganese, iron, antimony, and copper. Despite this information, the water quality standards provided in the EIR documents are only sufficient for discharging to land. This might be sufficient for a construction site, but is not appropriate for mine water going into the creek that affects aquatic life. This county should demand a surface water monitoring plan from the mine proponent. The second key point is that the mine proponent did an inadequate job of testing deposits at the mine site. The proposal notes that there will be 4 million tons of waste rock placed at two sites near the mine for the first 11 years of their mining. However, their water discharge was poorly characterized by only four tailing samples and six samples of the waste rock. This very low level of sampling and zero leach test does not meet the basic mining industry guidelines for reference testing provided in the guard guide. In addition, the geotechnical engineering work was not included as attachments to the EIR. This makes the description of the waste rock tailing facilities described in the EIR purely conceptual with no technical assessment of the viability. This lack of standard testing information should evoke a significant level of concern by the Board and our community. Finally, the biggest problem with this entire approach to permitting a mine is that there is not adequate financial assurances to cover the cost of reclamation. The proposal does not include the cost of ongoing water quality treatment, and mine reclamation could easily run into millions of dollars. If the mine proponent goes bankrupt, as numerous mine operations have in the past, there are supposed to be sufficient bonds to cover the cost of reclamation. The county should demand that the mine proponent estimate the cost of ongoing water quality treatment. In summation, due to many reasons, but particularly the insufficient water monitoring plan, inadequate testing to project water discharge, and lack of adequate financial assurances for reclamation, please reject this proposal in the interest of the public, water quality, and fiscal responsibility.
Thank you, Sid. I'm going to ask the Board really quick. I think three more speakers. Take a break at 4:00, but we have quite a few to go, so I'm thinking maybe come back at 5:00 instead of 5:30, providing two hours of additional public comment. You want to keep going? What's that? Yeah, I'm still thinking of breaking at 4:00. Okay, let's take a quick bio-break right now. We'll come back, and we'll go till 4:30, then we'll take a one-hour break. Does that work? Okay. Yeah, you can go ahead. Go ahead, and then we'll take a break. Sorry, state your name again.
I'm Gail Johnson-Fawn, resident of District Three. I hold a doctoral degree in organizational psychology with a special interest in behavioral economics. Thank you for your time, your thoughtfulness, and your attentiveness through this crucially important process. You have shown us that the trust we put in you has well been placed, a trust that you will put aside self-interest and special interest pressure to make a decision that is in the best interest not only of those of us who live here now, but of our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, and their children. I speak today for those children and the legacy you leave for them. They, and those who share their generations, remind us that your decision is made even more weighty by the countless decisions that have been made from people all over the world that have put our planet and all its inhabitants at risk. You are tasked with deciding if reopening this mine is good for our county, the health of our county, those of us who live here and those who visit. You've been tasked to decide if the EIR adequately addresses the negative impacts that will unfold over the next eight decades. Are the risks clearly and factually delineated? Are there sufficient mitigations to assure that the health of our environment and our citizens will not be compromised, that our wells will not be compromised? You are tasked to decide if decades-old climate models can be counted on to predict that atmospheric rivers will not overflow toxic settlement ponds into Wolf Creek and other waterways. We are grateful that you bring your best thinking as you consider if you are certain that the applicant has provided sufficiently reliable information that you need to predict the, to predict the health impacts on the proposed mine on us, and yes, our children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren will, that you have the information that you need. The consultants paid by the applicant say the EIR should be, put our minds to rest. A myriad of other impressive and qualified experts in various fields, relevant fields, say the EIR is deeply, deeply flawed. These experts have no stake in the game. Their passionate concern comes in those who, because they love this county, this planet, and hold a deep concern for those of us who live here now and those of the future generations for whom you design.
Thank you, Gail. We're going to take two more speakers, and then we're going to take our planned break after that until 5:30. What's that?
I would seek the consensus of your board in terms of timing.
We're going to break for one hour at 4:30. We're going to hear the rest of the speakers until 4:30. We're going to take a one-hour break and then come back. Go ahead.
Hello. I am Jeff Ato, District Four. There's no question that voting no on all aspects of this abomination will be a major step in the right direction towards reconciliation with the indigenous people of this region who were genocidally massacred in the name of gold mining for over 100 years. Do not let this horrific legacy rise again and massacre our environment. People of Nevada County, you're invited to sing along.
Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. You might say your mining claim is what everybody needs. Beneath your lying promises is the heart of your greed. We won't let you slip it into the ground beneath our feet. Rape our land of treasures that our people solely need. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Won't you please do us the decency of not pretending like you care? While you fill our space with toxic waste and contaminate our air. Rivers have no memory of poison in their veins. We will fight for every drop till you abandon all your claims. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. It's time to put the planet back to the place where it belongs. Sacred righteous architect of each and every soul. Take dominion exploitation. Take dominion exploitation and grade without remorse. Bring harmony and dignity in honoring our souls. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Wells run dry and the people are thirsty. Wells run dry and the people awake. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sid Brown, and I've been a resident and homeowner in District One since 1983. I commuted to Sacramento from 1983 to 2013 for my job as senior engineering geologist for California State Parks. For most of my career, I was the only geologist for the entire department. My expertise was always in high demand, and I have dealt with abandoned mine issues throughout my career, and have witnessed repeated attempts to revive gold mining here in Nevada County. I submitted comments on the draft EIR. I presented before the Planning Commission. I attended the vested rights hearing. And I request and hope and pray that you, Board of Supervisors, will follow your staff recommendations. The federal... the final EIR is simply inadequate despite its many volumes, and it fails to meet acceptable standards for project evaluation and mitigation. I will reiterate a couple of my specific concerns over specific issues. Empire Mine State Historic Park has experienced ongoing issues inherited from legacy mining impacts, and even with the relatively deep pockets of the state and the commitment to improving environmental conditions, negative impacts associated with water, toxic chemicals, subsidence, and collapse remain today, long after the active mining pursuits have ended. The Rise Gold Project would have significant and unavoidable impacts to the park, from underground plumbing effects to noise and aesthetics. Groundwater and surface water are inextricably linked, and the subsurface complex geology of fractures and faults render the transport paths of fluids in unpredictable ways. Our community is steeped in gold mining history and legacy impacts as we continue to struggle with these issues. I've seen it come over and over and over. While the mining activities soften with time and through the lens of nostalgia, modern techniques are at odds with an economy based on tourism and environmental quality. I strongly urge the Board of Supervisors to follow the staff report recommendations. Please do not certify the FEIR, do not grant a variance, and do not issue a permit for this ill-advised project. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Kurt Lorenz, 45-year resident of Nevada County, former Nevada County Planning Commissioner, and before that, I served on the water review team for the Ciscon Mine Project on San Juan Ridge. It was my phone that rang off the wall as mine after mine... I mean, mine. Well after well went down. The Ciscon Mine intersected something known as the F6 Fault. 14 wells failed. We had wells that lost 200 feet of standing water in 48 hours. The so-called experts on our EIR for the Ciscon Mine predicted less than nine inches of drop in any well in the area. The so-called experts apparently do not understand hard rock wells. Hard rock wells are based on the intersection of cracks that are filled with water that trickles down from the surface. Cracks are connected with each other, and they eventually achieve a stasis level that the well-drilling company hopes when they intersect a crack that it will be a productive water crack. That's the only place water comes from underground in this area. If you pump out the Idaho Maryland Mine, you will create a huge cone of depression. That means water flows through cracks to the mine. It doesn't do much of that right now because the mine is sitting there flooded. You pump the mine out, and suddenly the water has downhill. A long way to go. The Brunswick Shaft is 3,400 feet deep. The Ciscon Mine F6 Fault accident happened at approximately 400 feet below the surface. You are talking about 3/4 of a mile below the surface. The potential for a huge disruption in groundwater in the area, easily two miles out from the project, is enormous. Every possible well involved...
We appreciate your comments, Kurt. Thank you.
My name is Carlton Forsman. I live in District One. I'm here to mention height variance. Just prior to the Planning Commission hearing on May 10, 2023, Rise Gold wrote a letter to the Planning Commission dated May 5, 2023, which in part says, "This letter respectfully requests support for Option B," that was an alternative to Number Two, "supporting the project and height variance, and finding that it is consistent with the general plan." Regarding the height variance of 165-feet main head frame, Rise states, "The head frame is exempt from the county's variance requirements as a non-occupied structure, and the other structures covered under the variance application can be reduced to comply with the 45-foot height limitation." Rise's letter does not bother to footnote the specific development code for non-occupied structures. As with many things we've heard from Rise, it's important to check the details, as sometimes the stories that Rise spins do not line up with the facts. In the case of the 165-foot head frame, the Nevada County Land Use Development Code, Section L2424, regarding building height, Item D, "exceptions to Height Limits," states, "Architectural features not intended for human occupancy, such as spires, chimneys, vents, skylights, or solar equipment, and non-habitable structures such as private water tanks, antennas, windmills, and other alternative energy structures may exceed the allowable building height by no more than 20%. Height increases of more than 20% shall be subject to a use permit." So Rise Gold's non-occupied head frame does in fact violate the county's height limit as it is over 250% higher than the allowed 20% variance. A 160-foot building in the middle of neighborhood homes is an eyesore at best. There is no case that can be made that it would be aesthetically pleasing or unnoticed. I respectfully request you support the Planning Commission's unanimous vote, deny Rise's ploy to get around the land use codes, and deny the height variance.
Thank you for your comments.
Can we have Commenters 41 and 42 line up to the back? We will take those as our last comments before break.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Smith. From 2000 to 2007... Oh, from 2011 to 2015, I was Nevada County Planning Commissioner. From 2000 to 2007, I was a senior planner for Nevada County. And before that, from 1988 to 2000, I was an environmental planner for the County of Santa Cruz, implementing the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, managing EIRs on quarry projects. My comments are mainly directed at the EIR. The EIR does not discuss the impact of mining trucks... mining truck traffic on our roadway system, and it does not allow the impacts of truck traffic on Highway 20 and 49 after the estimated 11 years to fill up both storage. This is an 80-year permit. They analyzed 11 years of traffic, but they didn't include the trucks. And the reason the trucks aren't included is that CEQA was amended in July 2020 to include vehicle miles traveled and the vehicle miles VMT instead of level of service. Didn't include heavy trucks. So we don't know, and you don't know, what the traffic is going to be like. The new regulation refers only to passenger cars, so all I've analyzed is the employees. Heavy trucks can be... this is a quote, "Heavy trucks can be included in VMT analysis for convenience but are not the subject of the new CEQA requirement." In this case, inclusion of heavy trucks would not be convenient and rather would make the EIR's traffic analysis confusing. It's confusing to me how they can only do 11 out of an 80-year permit. That's crazy. So, the second of the many problems with this EIR is that the baseline water sampling done by the applicant used for the water quality analysis was not processed in compliance with scientific standards, and were all used even though the fact that the samples were analyzed out of whole time and many samples were not iced. You can see in here that they analyzed... logged in per client request. So it was the applicant that took the samples, that requested that they be analyzed, even though, you can see, there's a bunch of letters in the appendix that the staff doesn't want to use them. So all of the water analysis is skewed because the original baseline information...
Susan, thanks for your comments.
I'm Mike Pazner, District Four. I've been farming with Nevada irrigation water for 38 years. If Rise Gold succeeds in reopening the Idaho Maryland Mine, it would pump the water from 80 miles of their underground shafts and tunnels into Wolf Creek. When they pump their shafts dry, they will also be sucking contaminated water from the other approximately 140 miles of abandoned mines that surround them. My irrigation ditch pulls off of Wolf Creek below the mine. The last time this mine tried to reopen was 14 years ago with M-Gold. It was never clarified who would be responsible for this water quality. Rise intends to monitor water quality themselves for the next 80 years. Will it be Rise Gold's liability for poisoning the water, NIDs for selling the water, or Nevada County for allowing this project? When my water shows up toxic, I won't even know whose fault it was. Who will be liable for poisoning thousands of gallons of water? I don't want this potential problem, and neither does anyone else. The potential for mine waste entering Wolf Creek is more like an inevitability than a possibility. No mine, no shaft. Thank you.
Claire, did we have takers on the last two number call?
I believe we've got 141 lined up right here. Oh, I'm sorry, 42. If we can get...
43 and 44 want to go right to 4:30?
Thank you. 43 and 44, please line up in the back of the chambers.
It's like winning a prize. Just keep going until you see two people up there.
Okay, can we get... let's see, we are 43, 44, 45, 46? Okay. We'll have them...
Okay, we'll wait for a minute for them to come down. Understood. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am. Thank you.
Good afternoon, county supervisors and public. My name is Diana Suarez, a resident of Colfax and a supporter of Community Environmental Advocates Foundation, a board member of Earth Justice Ministries, and a friend of Bear River. I am a 50-year resident of both Placer and Nevada Counties. This comment addresses current and potential water pollution from the Idaho Maryland Mine. The Water Code defines water pollution as acid mine drainage, the discharge or leaching of heavy metals, or the release of other hazardous substances. Currently, water draining from the mine into Wolf Creek, a tributary to Bear River, contains almost six times the regulatory limit of arsenic and exceeds the limit for iron, manganese, and zinc. The final EIR fails to specify how long-term monitoring of these substances will be accomplished. It also fails to identify how polluted mine water will be treated after the mine ceases operation. Although the final EIR recognizes the need for long-term monitoring, it does not specify how this long-term monitoring will be accomplished, nor does it identify mitigation measures capable of ensuring that unanticipated contaminants will not adversely affect water quality. Because it lacks a specific long-term monitoring plan and lacks any measures needed to mitigate contaminants, the final EIR fails to address what may be, based on historical evidence, significant and unavoidable polluting impacts to the environment and the Bear River downstream. As the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board notes, "The draft EIR should be revised to address anticipated post-mining water quality issues and whether the mine will require long-term oversight to ensure that water quality conditions comply with applicable regulatory requirements." The mine project ignored this comment by the Water Board. Should this EIR be certified, the county will be left with the responsibility of managing the pollution of these remnant mine waters. This, along with its failure to address the monitoring of water quality after the mine closes, is a substantial reason to reject this flawed EIR. Thank you.
My name is Jean Forsman. I live in District One. The draft EIR recognized that the project... The draft EIR recognized that the project's operational impacts from emissions would be potentially significant based on North Sierra air quality management districts in NSA QMD's thresholds. But the draft EIR also predicted that there would be no difference between the project's unmitigated and mitigated operational emissions. In other words, the draft EIR identified a significant impact and then did nothing to mitigate it. This violates SEQA's clear mandate that an EIR must either adopt all feasible mitigation measures to reduce impact to less than significant levels, or it must further explain why further mitigation is not feasible. The final EIR claims the project's potentially significant operational air quality impacts are automatically reduced to less than significant levels by adopting certain construction phase measures listed in the NSA QMD's SEQA guidelines. The NSA QMD guidelines do not say that a project can automatically reduce its significant operational air quality impact simply by incorporating construction-related mitigation measures. If mitigation measures are not at least partially effective in reducing an otherwise significant impact, they do not qualify as mitigation measures at all. Construction phase measures that have literally zero impact on operational air quality emissions do not satisfy this requirement. The EIR claims SEQA materials from past projects in the region using NSA QMD guidelines in the same way. Past incorrect practices do not supplant the clear directives in the NSA QMD guidelines and in SEQA itself. But even if those previous studies were relevant, not a single one supports the EIR's position. Three of the four projects had no estimated operational emissions at all, and the one project that did involve operational air quality emissions incorporated mitigation measures that substantially and quantifiably reduced those emissions, exactly what the EIR needed to do here. The mine EIR does not claim it is not feasible to adopt measures to lessen the project's operational air quality impacts. It simply asserts that it did not need to consider such measures in the first place. That is wrong, and the EIR is legally deficient as a result.
Thank you, Jean.
Good afternoon, my name is Randall Newsom, and I'm a retired U.S. bankruptcy judge living in District 1. I have just a few points to make. First, RISE is broke. Its current liability exceeds its current assets by almost $200,000. Whatever may have been the company's original intentions, RISE Grass Valley clearly does not have and cannot raise the hundreds of millions of dollars required to reopen this mine. The whole thing has been a pipe dream from the very beginning. Second, RISE has never established the proved reserves of the mine as noted in their own economic report. Thus, even if RISE could prevail on its frivolous due process claim, without proved reserves, their damages are zero. Third, if you grant the permit, RISE will promptly try to sell the mine, probably through a bankruptcy filing and a sale-freeing clear of interests, either here or in Canada, so that they can attempt to strip out all the promises they've made to this community and hand clear title to the buyer. See their SEC 8K report dated 10/8/2023. With a new owner comes a new set of characters and a new chapter in this drama. The only purpose to be served in approving the permit now is to bail out RISE's shareholders from their bad investment. Fourth, when RISE bought the mine, they knew or should have known that the property wasn't zoned for mining. It can't now manufacture a due process claim by asserting that the county will violate its due process rights if it doesn't rezone the property. Besides, doing so would violate the general plan. See the introduction in Chapter 17 of the general plan, which states that, quote, "Mine development is encouraged in compatible areas before encroachment of conflicting uses." See also Section L-2, 3.228 of the zoning ordinance, which says residential use is inherently incompatible with mining. Fifth, the county is in the unenviable position of being sued by one side or the other here. However, there's ample evidence in the record to justify denying approval of the EIR and the permit. Better to deny both and defend the decision in court than to potentially spend the next 80 years in one court or another trying to prevent RISE from turning this community into an industrial hellscape. Reject the EIR, reject the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Randall.
Good afternoon, my name is Charlie Brock. I reside in District 1. This afternoon, I'd like to read some comments that have been written by, prepared by, or I should say, exist within the Shute Mahaly Report, which I believe you have in your possession and in your files. Thought I might just summarize some of their points today. "The EIR defers testing meant to ensure waste rock and tailings will not result in harmful discharges contaminated water into our surface and groundwater. It does not have a plan for safely storing fill material on-site prior to its sale and use off-site. It fails to provide any project alternatives that, quote, 'avoid or substantially lessen,' end of quote, 'significant environmental impacts as required by SEQA. The EIR uses an outdated groundwater baseline, which deprives its impacts and mitigation analysis of any value towards addressing impacts to well owners. It does not adequately respond to Commenters' concerns regarding its faulty groundwater modeling. The EIR analysis and mitigation of impacts relating to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and energy use are flawed. The EIR provides only one justification for refusing to mitigate the project's potentially significant operational air quality impacts, and that justification is incorrect. The EIR's discussion of the project applicant's proposed measures for air quality is incoherent. The EIR's plan to test for and manage the asbestos content of mined rock is internally inconsistent, likely to fail, and improperly defers mitigation. The EIR plans to test for and manage the asbestos content of mined rock is internally inconsistent, likely to fail," I think I just read that, sorry. "It also improperly relies on asbestos mitigation plans, inadequately using asbestos in proper testing. The EIR contains inconsistent conclusions regarding the risks associated with asbestos exposure. It fails to support the use of an justifiably high 10,000-megaton threshold of significance for operational greenhouse gas emissions." In concluding, I'd like to read precise words from the Shute Mahaly conclusion, which is brief. "As a result of the EIR violates SEQA and cannot be certified, I suggest you take the advice of your staff and your planning commission and deny this project." Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Good afternoon, my name is Bob Hubbard. I live in Grass Valley, adjacent to the Brunswick industrial site, and I'm a member of the Wells Coalition. Regarding the EIR protections for wells, Nevada County's General Plan Policy 17.12 states, quote, "The county shall require the operator to guarantee a comparable supply of water," close quote. The only comparable supply of water, if we lose our wells, is NID's service. Any other options, such as the trucked-in water or storage tanks the EIR describes, would be a burden on property owners and severely devalue our properties. One of the mitigations in the well mitigation plan states that it could include an extension of NID potable water to any wells that may be impacted. That's a big promise, with no evidence or study that it is even feasible. Therefore, the EIR fails to meet both SEQA and general policy plan in that it does not demonstrate how or if the applicant could feasibly provide NID service to impacted wells. This alarms me, as my well is essential for my home to be livable and to maintain its value. Other than the three designated wells along East Bennett Road, the EIR provides no feasible mitigation measure for connecting impacted wells to NID water service. That means no additional wells identified as needing mitigation, no water supply assessment by NID, no infrastructure design plans in place, no permitting, acquiring easements or rights of way, no timetable, and no enforceable remedy for impacted well owners. But most importantly, no financial assurances for design, construction, and bringing service to impact well owners. NID asked for a $14 million bond, but the EIR dismissed the need for the request stating a bond for construction of water supply infrastructure in this area is not necessary. The EIR ignores the risk to our wells from pumping over a million gallons a day from the mine for the life of the project. Where is the guarantee that the general plan policy requires? Where is the proof of feasibility that SEQA requires? If the mitigation is not feasible, it is not an enforceable remedy for impacted well owners. If you look at the language in the EIR, you'll see that it points to the county general plan and its requirements to protect well owners, but it fails to even discuss how the applicant would or could guarantee those protections with NID connections beyond the 30 properties. We as homeowners purchase homeowners insurance to guarantee protection for one of our most valuable assets, our home, but the cost of replacing a well with NID connections is not covered. We call on the county not to certify the EIR. It does not include meaningful enforcement..."
Bob, thank you for your comments. We are going to be on break until 5:30. We'll return at 5:30 sharp. Thank you.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything, but really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. It's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass
I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise, and first the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk, so on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours, so it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call, and that she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council, or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory, and as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street, so please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone, and having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything, but really we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise, and first the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk, so on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council, or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire. If there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire come down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved my life. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate. We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to resume public comment. We have a kiosk in the lobby for those people that are showing up from the 5:30 to 7 hour, based on the fact that they may not be able to attend. We're going to make our best, do our best to accommodate them and get them in to hear their public comment. Right now, we're going to resume with the numbers we had before. I'm going to turn it over to our county clerk to start that process again.
Hi, can we have numbers 48 to 55 line up in the back for a public comment? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hey, John, let me, let me get this. Everybody quiet down, please. We're going to listen to our first public speaker. Thanks. Go ahead, John.
Good afternoon. My name is John Vaughn. I live in District 3. According to the California Employment Development Department, 48,450 people were employed in Nevada County in December 2023. RISE's so-called significant economic benefits amounts to only a 6/10 of 1% increase in jobs, assuming RISE's predictions aren't exaggerated. Adding 163 induced jobs, which are jobs that may be caused by stimulus from mine operations, creates another 3/10 of 1%. Yet, it's silly to include that. Every business creates some form of induced jobs. These induced jobs were created by a multiplier in the economic modeling software. There was no actual survey to confirm if any business would hire new employees. Most of the 163 jobs are in the restaurant and retail category, part-time, with no benefits. The likelihood is small that those businesses would hire because a few extra customers show up. All of the economic report's conclusions are based on input from RISE. There are at least two major problems with the data. First, RISE speculates about 108,000 ounces of gold per year. There is no current data to support that assumption. RISE's own financial reports and SEC filings declare there are no established mineral reserves. The most recent exploration data from M. Gold in 2002 projected 27,500 ounces per year. When the mine went broke from diminishing reserves in 1955, they were producing just under 30,000 tons of ore-bearing rock per year. Even using RISE's highest estimate of 1 half ounce of gold per ton of ore, that's only 15,000 ounces of gold per year. The point is, the RISE annual revenue assumptions are very likely too high. Second, RISE says their annual expenses to produce 108,000 ounces is $68.3 million. That works out to $630 an ounce. But the $68.3 million does not include many of the other expenses normally found in an income statement, like depreciation, mitigation costs, leases, and on and on. And the industry average to produce an ounce of gold is about $1,200. Using $1,200 per ounce reduces contributions to the county general fund by 45%. What all that means is, the data provided by RISE is suspect at best, and the resulting conclusions are likely inflated. Trust your planning commissioners, deny the RISE use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'm William Clark. I'm a 23-year resident of District 3. I'm a retired aerospace engineer with a master's degree in system engineering, and I'm a volunteer at CEA. I'm here to address a concern we have regarding the Rise Gold project. The mine exhaust moisture creates potential air quality hazard and aesthetics impacts. You may recall the description of their unique mine ventilation design. A number of ventilation fans move surface air throughout the mine tunnels and exhaust saturated air through the head frame stack. The saturated air vents at 200,000 cubic feet per minute at 5 and 1/2 miles an hour 24 hours a day. We submitted comments to the draft EIR regarding our concerns. The response in the final EIR fails to provide information about the potential impacts of the vertical discharge of saturated air into the airport Safety Zone 5, creating possible turbulence and visual obstruction. See comment group 8-5. Rise Gold response states, "The project will be reviewed by the Airport Land Use Commission." However, the results of such a review were not included in the final EIR, nor do they list the Airport Commission as an entity required to approve potential permits. The impacts of the persistent cloud plume, which may extend into the airport airspace, have not been addressed, nor have the impacts of the constant upward-moving air mass been addressed and how that may induce turbulence. The final EIR also fails to address the aesthetic impacts of a visible plume extending above the head frame, which may be visible for miles around. Rise Gold also states, without evidence, "The project would not create a persistent cloud plume or fog." The response is, "In spite of clearly outlined conditions in which saturated warm air would interact with the cold air in typical winter weather conditions." The final EIR response is inadequate and fails to assess the potential impacts to air traffic and aesthetics. I urge the board to deny all specs of the Rise Gold project. That's your...
Thank you, William.
Hello. I'm Catherine Gerwig, District 1, and I'm here to talk to you about this wonderful mine that we're all so happy to have. I'd like to also mention that Ben Musmon knows all about discharging substances into the air. In December 17, 2023, he was charged 13 counts convicted of discharging substances that are into the environment above the permitted amounts. He was working as CEO of the Yellow Grove Guild Mine Company in Beards, Columbia. So he knows what happens when you have a mine, not just any mine, this mine specifically. He's seen our town. He's seen our water. He's breathed our air. He saw the houses up and through the hills. He's seen the houses around the place. He's seen our stores. He's seen, I'm sure he shopped at Grocery Outlet, Grocery Outlet, right next to, next to the mine, excuse me. And so he knows this. But then he goes on with the EIR, and we've gone through a couple of years now of these hearings, where people are highly educated, do their research, know what they're talking about, presenting this stuff. Well, Mr. Chris Powell says, "Those are just words." Yes, they're just words. But there's gold here, good gold. We've got to mine the gold. Let's mine the gold. It's there. Let's get it. Well, the one that shall not be named said, "Wait, we have the bombs. Why don't we use them?" Because there's consequences. And those consequences make a difference to our lives. The way we eat, the way we breathe, the way we swim, the way we drink, there are consequences. And those cancers can be deadly, excuse me, can be deadly. So we have to do something about that by not letting them into the air, by not discharging substances. And to do that, leave the gold there. there. This is not nineteen fifty-six. There's people living all over those hills, and the ground is falling in with, with what you call sinkholes. Our, our land is riddled with tunnels, and those tunnels will fall. What about that, that fault that you've got blasting right next to that fault? And he said, "Oh, well, we just won't put on any more maps." That'll work, but it's still there. "Oh, we'll fill it in." Sure, you will. Okay. Well, we've got some really highly intelligent people here. The one that just spoke, they know what they're talking about. They do their research. They know what they're talking about, and it makes a difference. So please listen to them. Pay attention to what they say, and don't let this...
Thank you, Catherine.
Hello, my name is Mike Shea. I live in Cedar Ridge. My house was one of the thirty sensitive receptors for the noise study. I'm going to give you two examples of how the EIR does not adequately evaluate the noise the mine will produce, and what the EIR claims about noise impacts is impossible. A six-day noise study was done by Bollard Acoustical Consultants. Bollard didn't put a noise monitor at my house. They used data from some other locations to extrapolate the noise at my house. I've lived at my house for fifteen years, so I think I know something about ambient noise there. The EIR says, and I quote, "The existing ambient noise environment in the project vicinity is defined primarily by traffic," and that makes sense at my location because we live in a residential neighborhood. The nearest high-traffic road is Brunswick, which is fifteen hundred feet away, and there is only forest between my house and Brunswick. According to the EIR, the nighttime noise at my house ranges from forty-four to fifty-six decibels. The traffic study that was done said that between 1:00 AM and 3:00 AM, on the Tuesday night they checked, only thirteen vehicles traveled on Brunswick. And here's where things get crazy, but this is what the EIR says. The mine's above-ground operation will take place two thousand feet from my house, so that's just another five hundred feet from Brunswick. And the EIR predicts the maximum noise from all nighttime mining operations will only be twenty-nine decibels. Think of it this way. During the two hours those thirteen vehicles drove over Brunswick, the mine will hoist a hundred and twenty tons of rock a hundred and sixty-five feet above the surface and then drop it into a steel chute, then transport three hundred and thirty-five feet on a conveyor belt before grinding it down. But they say this will be quieter than those thirteen vehicles on Brunswick Road. To summarize, the EIR is claiming the mine will be quieter than it is now with no mine. Then there's the engineered fill operation, which would start just five hundred feet behind my house and now go on for eleven years. The EIR says the daytime noise at my house ranges from fifty-one to sixty-four decibels. There will be a hundred runs a day by haul trucks rumbling over an unpaved rutted dirt track, then dumping twenty tons of rock out of steel bed trailers, then bumping down, back down the hill with an empty trailer. Then the dumped rock will be graded and compacted by bulldozers, excavators, compactors, and front-end loaders. Yet the EIR says that all of this will only generate forty-seven decibels of noise at my house. Once again, all this heavy equipment, five hundred feet away, will be less noisy than cars from Brunswick three times that distance. Again, it's like, it's, it'll be quieter than it is now, even though it's three, it's a third of the distance closer. These guys gambled on a long shot. Please don't bet the county's future on their flawed documents and false promises. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Blake. I've been a local realtor. I live in District Three, by the way. I've been a local realtor here for more than twenty-five years. What hasn't been put out to you is that when the county did their economic study, they surveyed all the, we have more than five hundred realtors in, in this area, in this county, and we were all surveyed as to whether we thought the impact of the mine would have an impact on real estate values. Most of us said, yes, it was not in the economic report, that survey. So the local Board of Realtors, the Nevada County Association of Realtors, did their own study, and they surveyed all of us, and a vast majority of realtors said it will not only impact negatively all of the properties in Nevada City, Grass Valley, Penn Valley, South County, everywhere, but those changes will be permanent. Now, what I want to ask you is, if property values go down, the taxes go down. Taxes, property taxes, are a huge income source for this county. So is that loss of income going to be offset by the income that RISE Gold is promising us? So I just want to kind of personalize this issue of loss of, of value. My husband and I bought a property up off Green Horn and Anchor with the idea, it was a beautiful property to start with, but we have poured hundreds of hours of labor, our labor, and other people's labor, and thousands of dollars to make the property just as perfect as we could and make it a really desirable property that someone would want, really want to buy at the right time, because we figured that at the right time, we would retire and use the equity, because we've poured all of our money into this property, to retire. Well, guess what? We had the best real estate market ever in Nevada County in twenty-one, twenty-two. We are now in the worst real estate market that we've ever had. And granted, that's due to interest rates mostly, but the big problem is, no one will even look at a property where we are, above the mine. As soon as you disclose it, and it's required by law that the mine be disclosed, people are not interested. We had three properties on my little short street for sale last year. No one, the minute they heard about the mine, no way. And also, we have...
Thank you for, yeah, thank you for your comments, Beverly.
Okay. Hi. My name is Laura Galiasso. I live on Diamond Court, which is off of Upper East Bennett. My well is one of, it started out being thirty, then it became, it started out as seven, became thirty. That will likely be impacted by this project. That puts me smack in the middle of this mess. I'm not going to address water rights. That's been addressed today. Thank you to those folks. Just going to address what's been offered to me. I pay an attention. I have read that RISE will bring me NID water. I have read RISE will pay for that and my water bill. But I have also read that RISE will not pay for water usage beyond four hundred gallons per day. I have no idea how many gallons per day of water I pull from my well. I have two and a half acres. It's partially irrigated plus the house. And still, after four years, no one has asked or offered to measure my current average usage, and that has never been adequately addressed in the EIR. I have also read that RISE will pay to cap my well. But then later on, I read, if I choose not to cap the well, keep it for outside irrigation, I have to pay for something called a double-check valve to prevent backflow into the NID system. That's a monthly fee. I have read that if I try and sell my property, these so-called perks from RISE disappear. So that's not a resale perk. It's just for me. What does that do to my property's value? That was just addressed by the woman right before me. That has never been adequately addressed in the EIR. As to my property value, my taxes, any future sale, I'm going to ask any of you, will you buy my property that is thirteen hundred feet away from a working mine's surface property? When the mine closed seventy years ago, it was over two miles outside of town, two miles from where anyone else lived. That is not the case any longer, and if Nevada County ever thought to reopen the mine, why did they permit all of these years, all of the homes and developments that are now built up against and near the mine's surface?
Thank, thank you, Laura.
Can we have Commenters fifty-six to sixty line up in the back, please?
I'm Carrie Stout, and I live in District Three. In addition to about five thousand local residents and two hundred and fifty businesses who signed petitions in opposition to the RISE Gold project, the hundreds of commentators on the draft EIR included a number of people with PhDs in geology, hydrogeology, mining geologists, medical doctors, environmental lawyers, sequel lawyers, and other PhDs. Commentators also included consultants with decades of experience, environmental engineers, scientists, local and state agencies, the city of Grass Valley, NID, and hundreds of local people who read the details of the draft EIR. For any subs, any item of substance, the EIR consultants ignored all the issues raised by these commentators, claiming they were ill-informed, confused, or just wrong. One example includes June A. Oberdorfer, PhD, professor of geology, professional geologist, certified hydrogeologist, and doctor of philosophy, geology and geophysics. Dr. Oberdorfer has a broad range of experience with groundwater resources and contaminated issues. She has advised public interest groups and acted as an expert witness on contaminated issues, et cetera. The EIR response to Dr. Oberdorfer's DEIR comments start with, "The commentator is confused on several certain issues, main issues. As you might expect, Dr. Oberdorfer disagrees," stating, and I quote the next parts, "Rather than addressing the substance of my comments, the responses by the mine's EIR preparer are to indicate that I'm confused about certain hydrogeologic concepts. I have been practicing hydrogeology since nineteen eighty as both an academic researcher and consultant, have a PhD focused on hydrogeology, have taught hydrogeology at the university level, and supervised master's students' research, and have consulted in hydrogeology extensively." She goes on, "I have taught groundwater modeling at the graduate level, conducted my own modeling, both as the academic and as a consultant, and I have supervised thesis modeling projects. The confusion exists in the mine's modeling report, which has internal contradictions and is not forthcoming with important modeling results that would clarify the issues being contested." The report produced by the mine's modeling contest...
Thank you for your comments, Cherry.
Wow. Good evening. I'm Ricky Heck. I live in Division One, in my home that sits right over the RISE Gold mining area for forty-two years. This is too loud for me. For forty-two years. Climate change is real, right, everybody? One of the glaring omissions of this EIR is the lack of discussion and any analysis of climate change on residential wells. Now, in contrast, NID has spent two years, over a million dollars, hired three extraordinarily talented and qualified consultant firms to examine and model climate change impacts on our watershed. They've done it over a period for fifty years, that's our modeling length of time. So how is this connected, right? Well, because the impacts of climate change are critically important and relevant, especially when you consider that the applicant's arbitrary ten percent drawdown threshold of significance for well mitigation. Continuing, as climate change progresses, it is really not fully understood what long-term impacts will be on the groundwater supplies. This applicant proposes an inadequate groundwater monitoring timeframe of twelve months. NID believes it will not be possible to establish reasonably sufficient baseline data from only one year. In contrast, NID's consultants are modeling that fifty-year timeframe. NID has received calls from an increasing number and complaints from households who are already experiencing negative groundwater effects to their wells that have been attributed to climate change. Setting that drawdown level at ten percent could result in making an operating well today inoperable because of the proposed project when combined with climate change. So I ask you, if NID can model for fifty years, this applicant should be required to do something more than twelve months. You've heard so many brilliant community members today speak to the inadequacy of the EIR. This was just one more. Please follow the direction of your extraordinary staff and do not certify the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky.
Good evening, Board. My name is Cedar Amadeo. I reside in District One, and I want to start my comment today by acknowledging that I am standing on Nisanon land. RISE Gold's advertising makes various claims about how they care about local community, such as buying a fire truck that would benefit public safety, but they seem to misunderstand what it means to be a good corporate citizen. A good corporate citizen would disclose that they need an extra-long fire truck anyway because multiple buildings exceed the height zoning limits versus claiming the benefit of buying a fire truck for the community. A good corporate citizen would take the two thousand and eight M. Gold Well Mitigation Plan as the minimum requirement and improve on that versus claiming repeatedly that there will be no impact to wells. A good corporate citizen would communicate to well owners, listen to their concerns, and include all well owners who have concerns in the well mitigation plan versus a last-minute monitoring plan that does not take these essential procedures seriously and into account. A good corporate citizen would agree to NID's request for a fourteen-million-dollar bond versus saying it's not needed. They would listen to City of Grass Valley, among others, about the benefit of a shorter permit versus eighty years, especially considering climate change. A good corporate citizen would involve and listen to local concerns and local experts and modify their plans accordingly. A good corporate citizen would follow the normal industry steps to open a mine by first requesting an exploration permit versus a production permit so that the community and investors would have accurate production numbers that could be trusted. A good corporate citizen would provide accurate information to economic studies that is based on industry norms versus poorly substantiated claims that they can produce gold for half the cost of industry averages. Yes, all these things cost extra money, but a good corporate citizen who claims to make a net profit of a hundred and twelve million dollars every year would be willing to invest some money into achieving goodwill in the community. Because they lack credibility, RISE's behavior to date calls into question every aspect of their plans. I respectfully request you trust your planning commission and just say no to all elements of the RISE's... of the Rise proposal. Thank you.
Cedar, thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Gary Griffith. I lived in Grass Valley for 25 years, District Three, for 18 years. I've monitored the water quality of the South Fork Wolf Creek, the stream that Rise Gold would like to dump their mine water into for 80 years. I'm currently president of the Wolf Creek Community Alliance. Supervisors, the planning commission deserves much credit for looking carefully at the submitted EIR and the request for variance and for seriously listening to the large amount of expert community input, much of what has been shared again today. We agree with the recommendation and that of your staff to deny this project. At Wolf Creek, we speak for the watershed, the streams this project wants to dump mine water into, the aquifer it wants to drain, the fish, the amphibians, birds, plants, and animals this project would impact, the forests, ponds, and wetlands it would destroy, and the people of this community whose health, livelihood, and quality of life it would impact. It's all one watershed. We have commented on this project from its beginning, from the NOP through to the final EIR, and have consistently found its analysis of impacts, as so many others have found, to be inadequate. Sometimes it is the pure lack of scientific data collected for impacts to streams, plants, and animals. Sometimes it is the questionable conclusions made based on that limited data or the valid impact issues that are, as you've heard, dismissed as speculative or insignificant without justification. Sometimes it is the way cumulative impacts for a proposed 80-year project are ignored. As also has been said, sometimes it is the insufficiently detailed management plans and the lack of strong safeguards for the county and the community when things do not go as planned. You've heard all this. All these are important reasons to see that this EIR is inadequate. As proposed, the heavy industrial project is fundamentally in conflict with the reality of this community, one where a city essentially abuts the project, where residential neighborhoods enclose it, where the green space around us that we value needs protection and restoration instead of degradation, and perhaps most importantly, impacting a community where water, health, and quality of life is more precious even than gold. In short, this project is clearly destructive to our community. This is personal. I live less than a mile from the proposed project site. My daughter grew up here. Neighbors have young children growing up here. We want to live in a community that protects our quality of life. We urge you to reject this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Can we have commenters 61 to 65 line up in the back? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Sheehan, and tonight I am reading for Eric Gibbons, who wanted to be here but had to leave. My name is Eric Gibbons. I live in District Three, and I'm a member of the Wells Coalition. The concern I'm raising with you tonight is that the significant lack of accountability in the EIR's primary well mitigation plan that applies to all well owners in the area. The EIR's most concrete promise to impacted well owners is this, quote, "If water supply to a property is disrupted for an appreciable amount of time greater than a day, a temporary water supply will immediately be provided to the property using water tanks," end quote. Really? That's it? This language does not hold the operator accountable for any timeframes for fixing wells or providing a permanent water supply replacement. In fact, all decisions about fixing wells or replacing water are left solely up to the mine operator, and Rise would take action only if the 15 monitor well locations in the official groundwater monitoring program flag an impact. It makes no commitment to use the data from the wells in the domestic well monitoring program. So even if a monitored well has a problem, Rise has no commitment to use that information to act. This approach opens the door to unending debates whether damage to a well was caused by the mine or some other condition. One of the biggest gaps in the plan is the absence of a separate oversight committee. This committee would determine impacts to well owners, resolve disputes, provide professional analysis of monitored data, assure timely execution of mitigations, and administer fines or corrective notices. Both the 1996 Emperor Gold and 2008 M-Gold mining proposals included forms of independent oversight. This EIR offers nothing but oversight by Rise. I'm concerned about the risk to my home and those of my neighbors. Some of my neighbors have had difficulty selling their homes because of the possibility that the mine might reopen. We are challenged with storm recovery, increased wildfire risk, and home insurance non-renewals. Are we really going to add in a necessary, unfixable risk to our wells and property values to this list? I respectfully request that you just say no to the project and the EIR.
Thank you, Gracie, for Eric. Song. Another song.
My name is Charlie Price. I'm a newbie, moved here in '90, transferred with the Forest Service because I love this community so much, as a lateral, not an increase in pay. I love this area, hate to see it get screwed up. Taken years and years to recover from the terrible, terrible gold mining scars. Generations of good folks working together, restoring this beautiful county of ours. Trees have grown back, now living here is fine. Folks even visit just to shop and to dine. Big step backwards would be a crime. Don't let them open Idaho Maryland mine. Now Grass Valley grew as a mining town, stamp mills, explosions shaking the ground. Gold ran out, the miners did too, then sawmills grew with their logging crews. Well, no one wants to visit an industrial town. Hall trucks and jake brakes a common sound. Big step backwards would be a crime. Don't let them open Idaho Maryland mine. Farsighted leaders paved the way for the beautiful county we live in today. Well, I know they'd roll over in their grave if you were to throw all their hard work away. Shops and restaurants, they don't want to see valued customers and the visitors leave. Big step backwards would be a crime. Don't let them open Idaho Maryland mine. Now Rise Gold tried to claim vested rights, no continuous operation. They knew that wasn't right, so now they're, they want a suit against us. Good money after bad, Rise Gold's a bust. They want you to ignore. Whoops, sorry. It's hard to play slide and not look down. They want you to ignore. Don't ignore, just say no. Thank you.
Charlie, thank you.
It's a hard act to follow. Good afternoon, thank you...
Can you pull that mic down right in front of you? Thank you.
Thank you, supervisors. My name is Lena Levy. I live in District Three, and I vote in District Three. I call your attention to a fundamental contradiction in Rise Gold's financial projections. These projections are based on historical assumptions for which there is no current exploration data. As noted in the RDN economics study, the only reasonably current data comes from M-Gold exploration in November 2002, which shows mineral reserves of 26,500 ounces per year, not the 108,400 ounces per year on which Rise bases most of its outrageous claims about benefits to our county. In their Canadian Stock Exchange filing, Rise states, quote, "Rise Gold Corp. has not established mineral reserves supported by an NI43101 compliant technical report and feasibility study," end quote. In all of Rise Gold's financial filings with the Securities and Exchange Commission, including the one from October 31, 2023, Rise states, "We have not established that our mineral properties contain any mineral reserve according to recognized reserve guidelines, nor can there be any assurance that we will be able to do so." The Rise SEC filing also states, "The probability of having a reserve that meets requirements is small, and our properties may not contain any reserve." Therefore, the Rise financial projections are based on what SEC Industry Guide 7 calls an inferred mineral resource, which the SEC Industry Guide goes on to say is the lowest level of geological confidence and further that inferred mineral resources should not be used to predict economic viability. I believe we should take them at their word. There are no mineral reserves, and therefore no revenue to create jobs or generate taxes for the county. Rise is telling a very different story on their website to the county and to this community than what they are telling their investors in their legal financial filings. Of course, it benefits them financially to entice unwary investors by using inferred mineral resources with little regulatory oversight on their glossy promos and at the same time to delay the measurement of actual mineral reserves because they would be required to pay taxes to the county on them. They can't have it both ways. They can't claim huge revenue for the purpose of getting a use permit from the county while skipping out on paying fair taxes on the reserves by skipping the exploratory phase. Please vote no and deny this project.
Thank you, Lena.
Can we have the group of commenters 66 to 70 line up in the back, please? 66 to 70.
I'm the president of the CRN's for Responsible Resource Development. We're a nonprofit here that educates people about the resource industries, including mining, and many of our members work in the mining industry. I'm a mining engineer with 30 years of experience. I've worked all over the world, and I've worked in many urban communities where there are mines developed that are integrated into the community. Often, the communities over the years have grown around those mines as they built, but there's no reason that a mine can't be in a community like Grass Valley or Nevada City or in the county here. For the record, I'd like to talk about the recusal of Heidi Hall. Heidi says she wasn't involved, or she was involved in another project some 15 years ago. That project was actually the permitting of the Idaho Maryland mine when we were going through the process as M-Gold mining back around the mid-2000s. So she was, should have disclosed that she was a founding member of Claim Grass Valley. Claim Grass Valley was formed to oppose the Idaho Maryland mine at that point in time. Claim Grass Valley merged together with the Rural Quality Coalition to form CEA, which is currently opposing the mine. In my opinion, and I wrote a letter back in May 7, 2020, 2023, asking her to recuse herself, and it would have been easier for her to do this. She's even admitted today having multiple meetings with CEA over the term, and that taints her participation in these hearings, but it also taints the hearings for the Board of Supervisors, and courts have overturned the rulings because people have failed to recuse themselves because of bias. And if you read her comments related to our project back in that time, which I've submitted, she was not only biased about the project itself, but mining in Nevada County and Canadian mining companies coming in and developing projects, and her comments are part of the public record, and I resubmitted them again today because of that. The county had the obligation, statutory obligation, to produce a draft and final EIR going through the process. Apparently, they haven't listened to their own consultants in the sense that they have decided not to certify that EIR and essentially punt the decision using 15270A of Sequa. I'd like to point out that 15270Sequa actually states that Part A should be used at the start of a project, not at the end of a project, so an applicant doesn't spend years and millions of dollars trying to permit a process only to have it turned down in this case.
Thank you for your comments, David.
Can we have commenters 71 to 75 line up in the back? Thank you.
Ralph Silberstein, CEA Foundation. Rise paid about $3.5 million for 175 acres of real estate, a fair price, and included a bunch of mineral rights for an abandoned mine that is worthless, really. I say that because though there's gold in the rock down there, it's not really an asset if you consider the costs of mining it. And remember, the mine shut down in '56 solely due to economic costs and low-grade ore. I say worthless because to open a mine now, there's the cost to provide water service to over 300 well owners. There's the cost to fund permanent mine water treatment facility, which will be required, and to that the cost to deal with hazardous mine waste, which this EIR failed to address. Mine waste is always a problem with mines. Here, it is compounded by both asbestos, causing air pollution, and the toxic mine drainage. Then there's the external costs. Greenhouse gases are unmitigated. Impacts on quality of life and health are unmitigated. The cost to local real estate, already felt. Who pays for these takings? We're still paying for the external costs from last time: creek pollution, habitat impacts, unusable tracts of land, and the costs that Rise has not disclosed of their $3.3 million liability to clean up the Centennial site. On its outset, gold mining has caused the brutal eradication of the Nisanon peoples and their habitat. Things have only started to heal from those dire costs. Now, the long-abandoned mine sits within another community. Blasting, rock crushing, hauling, equipment noise, dumping, spreading, compacting, these are inappropriate uses now. It's over. I understand the lure of gold. The people dream of riches, but as we move our community, this beautiful place, into the future, it makes no sense to screw things up again. Drilling and blasting and lifting rock from 3,000 feet down to get out less than one-half ounce of gold per ton that we don't really need, and then their ore always runs out. Openness of mine will always cause harsh environmental costs to air, water, noise, traffic, greenhouse gases, and more. There's no getting around it. Mining companies that come here have no interest in our forest, wildlife, health, culture, community, or future. They want to extract, make a profit, and leave. The past can teach us a lot. Over time, we've seen a more sustainable economy growing. Let's not derail what we have going for us. We should not bequeath upon our progeny yet again the burden of an economy grown from mining with no future other than more tailings piles and toxins leaking into our creeks and a certainty that the ore will run out again. Deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ralph.
My name is Jonathan Keen. I live in Grass Valley, District Three. Thank you, supervisors, for being here and for this opportunity to speak to you today. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, pull the mic down so it's in front of you there. Thank you.
I'm a general contractor, and I've lived in Nevada County for 54 years. I have part of the Wolf Creek Community Alliance, and I have monitored the streams of our watershed almost every month for the last 18 years. I speak for the creek and the trout. The EIR for this project does not adequately address impacts to South Fork Wolf Creek. The South Fork is... South Fork is one of many tributaries of Wolf Creek. It runs directly through the heart of the proposed Brunswick site. It is a federally protected perennial stream, and the upper half of the creek was ignored in the EIR. One stretch of South Fork of Brunswick site is currently encased in a culvert, but the stream is nonetheless healthy and vibrant upstream and downstream, and even in the culvert itself. This creek is discussed in the section titled Biological Resources. Kind of boring, but what we're talking about is fish and the bugs they eat, dragonfly larvae, damselflies, worms, beetles. It's the interconnected web of aquatic life. So yes, even in the culvert, the reach is an important biological resource. It allows for the passage of trout and other aquatic species from the headwaters above Brunswick Road to the downstream reaches and back up again. Again, however, the EIR disregarded this stream running through the project site. Despite concerns raised by our alliance and others, the EIR claims that the creek begins at the spot where it leaves the culvert. Where do they suppose the water and the fish and the bugs come from? Impacts that would occur during replacement of the culvert should have been considered, but they were not. Alternatives, including daylighting of the culvert, should have been considered, but they were not. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife also responded to this EIR. On page 2-202, you'll find their comment. The EIR did not analyze all potential temporary, permanent, direct, indirect, or cumulative impacts to the aquatic features and associated biological resources that may occur because of the project. So supervisors, we agree, we at the Wolf Creek Community Alliance, agree with the Fish and Wildlife. The EIR is insufficient. Please do not certify it and do not approve the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Bowman, and I am nine years old. It's not often we have a big say on the big environmental issues we face. Whenever you see an opportunity, you should take it. It will make a change, and every change helps. I'm here because I want to make a change in the community. Hard rock, hard rock mining is an harmful operation on the environment. It can create negative impacts to wells, harm air quality, and make climate change worse. We have enough gold. We don't need to mine anymore in my community or in anyone else's. Please say no to the mine. Thank you.
Bowman, thanks for your comments tonight.
I now know that I live in the black area of the gold mine. I have also experienced an underground mine firsthand. I heard the planning commission, at the planning commission meeting, every 10 feet there's going to be a blast that makes a controlled blast, and my answer to that, until it's not. I lived on the San Juan Ridge with Siskiyou Gold Mine, was doing blasts, and we felt them almost two miles away. Then there was a day that it wasn't just a blast. It was a huge blast. It was a hard blast, and it was a loud blast, and I felt it shake the ground under my feet. A few days later, my well was gone. Kurt, who spoke earlier, was, I was one of his first calls. The fault that is considered not important in the EIR is the same fault that took my well when it opened the aquifer. It is the same fault that runs under Idaho Maryland Mine, which the EIR said was not important. My well was monitored for two years, not one. My well was replaced with a poor water quality well that now is only usable with water treatment. I moved from the San Juan Ridge, and now I find there may be tunnels underneath my new home. I heard testimony of someone who is right on the edge of Idaho Maryland Mine, and their well, their well was not one of them monitored. All wells within at least two miles, if not three or four or more, should be monitored and not just for a year, but the full 80 years while their permit is running. If Rise is allowed to operate, we will be stuck with it, and so will you. Please do not fall for the smoke and mirrors of another mine investment company. Learn from past mistakes. Say no to Rise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky, for your comments.
Can we have the next group of commenters come up? We're looking for numbers 76 to 80. 76 to 80, please line up in the back.
Board of Supervisors, what a great and long day. My condolences for your fanny fatigue. I have two points.
What's your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jeff Brownwood. I've been Nevada County resident for 26 years and a retired physician. And I'd like to address two points. What the crux of the argument, it appears to me, for Rise Gold's petition is the concept of ownership, and they brought this up this morning. And ownership does confer certain rights, there's no question, but it's not the right to do what you want with your land with disregard or regardless of how it impacts other people in that community. So there's rights and there's responsibilities. For example, if I own a gun, that doesn't mean I have the right to go and use it indiscriminately and maybe shoot people or something such like this, or if I had a piece of land, if I wanted to rent it out to store toxic waste, you know, that's not a good idea. So there are rights conferred by ownership, and I think there's a tendency to, they may take this to a constitutional debate about ownership, but I think there are also responsibilities, and I think that that really needs to be paid attention to here, and that is the responsibility to the community at large in Nevada County. The other point I would like to point out is Rise Gold has painted this as a win-win situation for Nevada County. They win, they get their mine, and, you know, they make a certain amount of profit, and it's a good business, and Nevada County ends up profiting, you know, with a benefit. But, you know, I was dismayed to hear that if they don't get their approval, they are going to hold Nevada County hostage to the tune of maybe $400 million in a lawsuit that they're, that Nevada County is exercising eminent domain or taking without compensation. And $400 million, you know, if you divide that by 100,000 residents, they're trying to levy a fee or a tax of $4,000 per resident in Nevada County. That's men, women, and child. And I think that's an egregious breach of corporate responsibility. And I would urge the Board of Supervisors to vote no on this petition. Thanks very much.
Jeff, thank you for your comments.
My name is Fred Pullman. I live in District 3. An 80-year permit is a reckless permission and denies agency to future generations. Eighty years ago, in 1944, the world was engulfed in humanity's most destructive war. For subsequent generations, it is not within living memory. How many people here today will be alive 80 years from now? We just heard from a wonderful nine-year-old. Hopefully, in 80 years, she will be an 89-year-old person in a more enlightened community. Over 50 years ago, the EPA was created. Since then, much has changed in the world's outlook toward environmental damage and degradation. The arc is clearly moving toward greater environmental protections. Can you imagine that 80 years from now, that people here will look upon the enterprise of today's deliberations with any more favor than they do now? Many today and those at previous forums have presented with research conclusions the many environmental dangers that reopening the Idaho Maryland Mine will unleash. From the many public comments from residents and civic groups, thousands of petition signatures, and numerous submissions to the union, it is abundantly clear that this community opposes the mine today, certainly, and likely for all tomorrows. An 80-year permit is a reckless permission and denies agency to future generations. Follow the Planning Commission's recommendations and say no to the EIR and the reopening of the mine and its 80-year permit. I thank you, and future generations will thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Appreciate your comments.
My name is Pat Nelson. I'm a resident of District 4. I thank you, supervisors, for the opportunity to provide comments on the proposal to certify the final Idaho Maryland Mine EIR prepared by the county on the behalf of Rise Gold. I value the time and effort that the county staff and applicant have invested in this important project for the Nevada County community. The project will have many positive impacts that will benefit the community, including an improved economy, which means jobs and tax revenue, that will support improved community infrastructure and wildfire resilience. The tax revenue will make unnecessary new sales tax initiatives to support fire and emergency services and special district consolidations. I appreciate the position that you are in, having to listen to the repetitive comments of the opposition lobbying you to not certify the EIR that have been presented, the comments have at prior public meetings here and for the M Gold Idaho Maryland Mine project that I was part of. The comments provided have been answered multiple times in writing and are already part of the project record in the EIR. It is unfortunate that the county staff report recommendation upends their conclusions in the EIR that state the project as proposed has potential impacts, but they can be mitigated to less than significant levels. In addition, Rise Gold has expressed a willingness to work with the county to address those comments and additional mitigation measures as part of the entitlement process. The basis for the county's staff recommendations to deny the project, that it is not consistent with the general plan, is contrary to the county's Development Code, Section L22.73 of the County Land Use Development Code and state law under SMARA Section 3676(c). Each encourage mining projects and protects mineral deposits classified as MRZ2 zones, which the mine is, and directs lead agency, that would be Nevada County, to impose conditions upon incompatible land uses in and surrounding the areas containing identified mineral deposits.
Thank you, Pat, for your comments.
My name is Aitara O'Connell. I live in Grass Valley District 1. I speak today for the spotted owl, the foothill yellow-legged frog, and the finger rush. This EIR does not adequately consider impacts to birds and amphibians or plants. Much of the biological surveying done in the ERI centers around the presence or absence of special status species. The EIR does a minimal job of this, initially doing so few surveys that additional ones had to fit in and be completed after the DEIR. Yet the problems with the surveys remain the same. Special status species are not always easy to find due to their rarity, their movement, their blooming season, or year-to-year changes. So biologists look for suitable habitat as a sign of possible presence. Unfortunately, the surveyors for this DEIR frequently minimized the suitability of habitat almost always in the report without substantiation or specific evidence. This bias against finding suitable habitat is pointed out repeatedly by commentators such as California Native Plant Society and other qualified experts. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife protocols require that surveyors should space botanical field visits throughout the growing season to accurately determine what plants exist in the project area. This usually involves multiple visits to the project area in early, mid, and late season to capture the floristic diversity at a level necessary to determine if specific status plants are present. Surveys were not done in this manner. The EIR instead states that single surveys were conducted somewhere, usually at the end, as it turns out, with a blooming or breeding season. California Department of Fish and Wildlife is clear that this is not enough. Overall, whether it is in regard to the spotted owl, willow flycatcher, yellow-breasted chat, foothill yellow-legged frog, or the rare finger rush, the EIR does its best not to find these species by minimizing the potential for their presence and not following survey protocols. And if these species are found during construction, they will simply be removed and their habitat destroyed. And if the species is disturbed by noise, lots of habitat, or other disruption, they will simply be forced to leave as the circumstances for their survival will no longer be present. Please do not certify this EIR and do not...
Thank you, Aitara.
Can we have the next group of commenters line up in the back? Numbers 81 to 85.
My name is Michael Taylor. I'm running for District 1 Supervisor. I'm going to echo some other concerns with Heidi Hall should recuse herself. When M Gold was applying in the county for mining rights, Heidi was actively opposing the mine opening. As part of actively opposing the mine, she also considered herself an environmentalist. Moving forward, she's been on the board with Circle as well as suggesting that she does not want to see the mine open as an activist for Circle as well. I'm concerned procedurally and legal, the legal consequences that are happening right now in Nevada County with the Rise Gold application. I'm agreeable, I agree with everybody else that the EIR is not something that we could certify. However, I put the responsibility on the staff. These gentlemen paid for an application process to have an EIR process presented to the county so that it would be acceptable. They did produce one they felt was acceptable and presented it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is appointed by you guys, each of you person, they don't have any real qualifications other than you guys appoint them. They then listened to three years of staff reports that consultants, attorneys, put this EIR together, and then five people on the, on the Planning Commission that don't have any real knowledge decided the EIR is not acceptable, which I agree with. However, it's the... However, it's the four years or three years that staff put this plan together that I think is the consequences of these gentlemen that paid for that. In the beginning, in 2017, you guys approved drilling. 2019, you approved lowering the level of the water by seventy-one feet. They were getting led on that somehow this is going to be possible, and to the point of going to the Planning Commission. I think, my personal feeling is, that this should be, go back to the Planning Commission, put together an EIR that's acceptable to the staff, then re-present that to the Planning Commission for reevaluation. The process is messed up, it's out of balance, staff report, first staff report, second staff report, it's out of whack. I think the county needs to get in alliance with what they're suggesting to you guys in order to how to move forward, so it's not mis-messaged. What else I want to say? I guess that's really about it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Michael.
Good evening. My name is Saul Henson. I'm the president of the San Juan Ridge Taxpayers Association. I'm in District Four, and I'm also a hydrologist. Based on the catastrophic failure of the Siskon Gold Mine on the San Juan Ridge and the myriad concerns identified by community members, we ask that you deny certification of the EIR for the Idaho-Maryland Mine. Statements about groundwater impacts in this EIR are eerily similar to those made in the Siskon EIR thirty years ago. The Siskon EIR all but guaranteed that there would be no significant environmental or community impacts, including to groundwater. In 1992, after decades of responding to the mining applications in the North Columbia diggings, the San Juan Ridge community decided it was best to negotiate safeguards for a mine rather than to continue fighting. Community members, the county, and Mine Corporation hammered out the remedial water supply plan, which outlined monitoring and safeguards from potential mine operation impacts. When mining began, in quick succession, issues began to spring up. A nearby well was lost, the infiltration pond clogged with clay, and began dumping water from the mine directly into Spring Creek. Only then did it become clear that there was no one enforcing the infractions, and community members, without any power to remedy the situation, were forced to monitor these very real public health and environmental consequences. Soon after, on Labor Day of 1995, the mine operation breached a bedrock fault. Miners nearly lost their lives due to the resulting flooding, and a dozen wells were drained, including those of Grizzly Hill School and our local cultural center. The Mine Corporation denied fault, but agreed to drill new wells for those who lost their water immediately following the fault breach. And as Ricky Colby alluded to, there were reports of folks getting ill from their water after these wells were drilled. So like this Siskon disaster, the Rise project lacks adequate hydrological information and well monitoring. But in this case, it's not the super-rural setting that's on the San Juan Ridge, it's in the urban setting of Grass Valley, which could greatly compound impacts. So I ask you, urge you, do not certify the EIR and vote no on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Saul, for your comments.
My name is Kim Weber. I live in District One, and I'm hoping that I'm not the only one that understands what Rise Gold's game plan is. It was right there, on the first couple of slides. They're hoping that if they make a big deal about how much more hazardous some of these other mines are, that we'll be okay with what they're offering us. I know a guy who has twelve rats in his house. So I'm supposed to be okay with having only one rat? That's the game plan. Well, Mr. Powell, we also have a game plan. It's called "One Rat Is Too Many." Supervisors, please, please do not gamble with the safety and the future of this town that we love. Reject this ill-fated project.
My name is Avila Lawrence, and I live in District Three. I'm a member of the Wolf Creek Community Alliance, and thank you, supervisors, for your attention. I'm here to address the impacts from the mine project to the Bennett Street Meadow and its wetlands. Impacts such as increased flow of water, erosion, turbidity, temperature, groundwater depletion, and noise were insufficiently addressed in the EIR. The EIR used only incomplete single surveys and incomplete data to draw its conclusions. This approach led it to indicate that there would be no impacts to this historic part of Grass Valley. This is in contrast to the expert opinion of California State Parks, Gold Country Avian Society, both of which have ongoing projects in the meadow, as well as Circle. Updated responses in the EIR rely on speculation and insufficient data, as California State Parks suggests with regard to turbidity, or incomplete modeling. For instance, Appendix H presents only two scenarios for groundwater depletion. There were no projections using flows higher than the average 1.9 cubic feet per second. This meadow is a unique resource. The EIR does not offer enough analysis to assure that this last remnant of the original grassy valley will be protected. Please do not certify this EIR and do not approve the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alva, for your comments.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and your attention. My name is Kristin Heinz-Strom, and I live in District One. I am the programs director of Wolf Creek Community Alliance, and I am a watershed professional with over twenty-five years of professional experience. I also speak on behalf of my children and my grandchildren, who also live in District One. A little three-year-old girl that I'm hoping will be able to be healthy for the next eighty years, rather than having to be concerned about other organization studies that have shown a higher body burden of carcinogenic heavy metals among women who have lived more than ten years in this community. There is arsenic that we have detected downstream from the Idaho-Maryland Mine. The crushing of rock that contains heavy metals makes them into smaller particle sizes that are more easily dissolved into the water. The EIR ignores cumulative impacts as speculative when these impacts could reasonably be studied and considered. Cumulative impacts include, if we are bringing additional issues with heavy metals, how is that within the overall context of a community who has been trying to clean up the widespread heavy metal contamination for decades? It took Newmont decades to clean up Magenta Drain with knowledge that there were heavy metals going through Memorial Park, where children play. Do we trust this company, who threatens to force a mine opening with a suit? Do we trust them to have our best interests and our health in mind? They say that, the city of Grass Valley asserts that the applicant's request for an eighty-year permit is extraordinary, okay? They say that it fits their economic model, but they don't want long-term consideration of the impacts for a multi-general period in this multigenerational community. They are saying that climate change is speculative, all right? Those 1.2 million gallons of mined water they would put into Wolf Creek for eighty years after six months of 3.6 million gallons?
Thank you, Kristin, for your comments.
Good evening, Chair Bullock and Board. My name is Wade Lafter. I live in District One, and it's a real pleasure to be here this evening. This is going to sound funny, but actually, I want to thank Rise Gold for their proposal because of what it's done to this community. I see the way that we have all come, so many voices have spoken today about their feeling or their sense of what's right about this community. And this conversation, to me, has really established what are the values in this county, in this community, amongst us, the folk who live here. And it's really two straightforward choices. One is gold, and it certainly has a value of its own, no question about it, or the quality of life, the reason that we all live here. And I think, for me, I will speak honestly, that for me, it's about quality of life. So again, Rise Gold, thank you for putting forth this proposal because of what it has done to our community. You have brought so many voices together. And secondly, I would like to thank our county staff for the great job you did at looking at this proposal and putting forth good advice for our supervisors and supervisors, particularly each of you in turn. I want to thank you for your service, not just on this issue, but over the last few years, I've listened to a lot of your meetings at home, and I'm really grateful for the quality of representation that you folks bring to the governance of our community. I also want to thank all of the nongovernmental organizations and the volunteer-run organizations that have spoken for our community about what our values are. And so I guess I want to close by noting that as our elected representatives, I would ask you to do, I'm going to quote a guy I almost never quote. One of our previous presidents, Mr. Ronald Reagan, said, "Just say no." Thank you.
Wade, thanks for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
It's a real pleasure to see you, and you got my vote, Heidi. Thank you.
I live in District Three. I'm part of Wolf Creek Community Alliance, and first I want to thank you very much for being here tonight, very late. I speak for the watershed and all that flows downstream. This DEIR unreasonably defers consideration of management plans, permits, and monitoring essential to the projection of biological resources, thus not allowing for a full consideration of its impacts. Comment letters from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, California Native Plant Society, and the law firm of Schut, Mahaly, and Weinberger all point out the inadequacy of referring to future mitigations without explaining their details. This leaves us unable to judge the completeness and adequacy of those mitigations, whether they involve the management plans, water treatment plans, permits, robust monitoring, financial assurances such as bonds, or public access to real-time information. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife states this problem clearly in their comment. Formulation of mitigation measures should not be deferred until some future time, because there is no guarantee that these approvals or cooperation with all the involved entities will ultimately occur. The mitigation measures are unenforceable and do not reduce the impacts to biological resources. This uncertainty about the probable success of actions meant to mitigate impact should have been remedied in the EIR by more detailed descriptions of plans, as well as many more measures that build confidence for success, including economic support for the county to monitor mine operations, bonds sufficient to cover mine failures, and legally binding mechanisms that require mine operations to cease if impacts endangering the community occur. Please do not certify this EIR. Do not approve this project. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Denise.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Thompson. I live in Nevada City in District One.
Can you pull that mic right up to you there?
Sure.
What was your name?
Wendy.
Wendy, thank you.
My name is Wendy Thompson, and I live in Nevada City in District One. Today, I speak for the Brunswick Pond with its pairs of wood ducks. I'm submitting these comments as a water quality volunteer for about fourteen years, and I'm a member of the Wolf Creek Community Alliance. Wolf Creek would be negatively impacted by this underground mining project. We ask that this final project's final EIR not be certified, as it does not clearly consider impacts and degradations to the biological values of the Brunswick Pond. This pond historically was part of a larger wetlands area that exists today just downstream. South Fork Wolf Creek flows immediately next to this pond. Engineering studies in the EIR don't seem to see that these two water bodies are connected. This is not just a random man-made pond that needs no protection. The point for us is that they are connected hydrologically with a drainage area, and more studies were not done. Destroying the pond and using it simply as a holding pond for water would be a great loss of the vibrant ecological diversity that now exists. State and federal law requires that any body of water connected to the overall hydrology of a watershed be protected for its biological resources. This pond is very rich with life, supporting a riparian zone with habitat for migrant birds, potentially including the special-status black rail, pairs of beautiful wood ducks, and certainly a whole ecosystem of aquatic species. This diversity is critical and needs to be preserved. None of this has been studied or considered by the EIR in spite of our previously expressed concerns. Please, I ask you sincerely, do not certify the final EIR, and please do not approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy, for your comments. That's going to close our public comment tonight. I'm going to reconvene a- I'm going to reconvene us here tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., if you're in possession of a number. You will be called in the morning, and we'll reconvene, start public comment again at that time. I'd like to thank our staff. Oh, I think I have some official language I'm supposed to read. I wanted to thank, first of all, our staff, the consultant team, our applicant for their patience. I know that this hearing process can be difficult, and I wanted to thank you for your patience. And I want to thank the community for showing respect to the applicant, our staff, and each other during this process. Thanks to our media partners as well. This special meeting of the Nevada County Board of Supervisors, held on Thursday, February 15, 2024, is hereby ordered adjourned to Friday, February 16, at 9:00 a.m., and will be held at the Board of Supervisors chambers, first floor, 950 Midu Avenue, Nevada City, 95959. That's right here. We'll make it the best, the best hearing again tomorrow. Thanks for your time.